I'd like to call this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to order. Eileen, would you call the, would you read the opening statement, please?
Yes. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 19, 2018, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Troytown News. Second, on January 19, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 19, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the planning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes, one moment. Former Mayor Gatto.
Present.
Mr. Husser.
Here.
Chief Kudrick.
Present.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
Mr. Schneider has been excused. Mr. Tannenhouse.
Here.
Mr. Boyle.
Here.
Mr. Seaman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor De Castro.
Here.
Mayor Berger.
Present.
And Chairman Nash.
Present.
You have a quorum. Thank you. I'd like to, everyone to rise, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, and after, if we can, a moment of silence for the victims of the shooting in Florida and our first responders in general. Thank you. Chief?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no minutes to approve? Do we have any correspondence?
Yes, I do have correspondence. One second. I have a letter from Mr. Alfieri regarding 41 Randolph LLC, case number SP-1027, which is on tonight's agenda. He has asked that this please be carried to the Board's March 1, 2018 hearing. Please take jurisdiction tonight and announce that the application is carried without the requirement of renoticing. He has also granted the Board an extension of time to act through March 31, 2018. And that agenda is fine, there's one other small case that's on that night as well.
Okay, fine. Mr. Cuchara, would you make the announcement, please?
Forty-one Randolph.
Okay.
March 1st.
Case number SP-1027 of 41 Randolph LLC, be carried to the Board's March 1, 2018 meeting. There'll be no further notice to property owners, so if you received a notice, you will not receive another in the mail. The file is in Eileen's office and can be reviewed during normal business hours.
Thank you.
I also sent an email to all the members with the training schedule for this year through New Jersey Planning Officials, and I asked that each member please look at that, check your schedule, let me know if that date works, if you will be attending. If it doesn't, there's a list of other dates on there, if you want to attend a separate date. I need to do a purchase order for that, so it's imperative that we get it in as soon as possible so you don't lose your training dates. Thank you. And I think Ron has one other item to bring up.
Yeah, this has to do with case number SP-1026A, L&amp;L Paving Company, Inc. Received a letter dated February 13, 2018 wherein the counsel for the applicant, Mr. Butler, has requested that the application be transferred to the zoning board of adjustment based upon the zoning board's recent resolution interpreting the ordinance. So there's nothing the Board has to do, we're just announcing that that now will be at the zoning board.
Thank you. And that's it.
Okay. The Board did receive two emails about some ordinances that Freehold Township is proposing. It's made it through the first reading, and comments were due back to the Freehold Township by February 24th, so since we're not meeting between tonight and then, if anyone has any comments, we need to get that on the record so that we can write a response. Anyone have any comments on it? Then we will move to resolutions. Case number SD-2983, John and Helen Tosh, the resolution for granting submission waiver eligible voters of Mr. Kuzer, Chief Kunderik, Mr. Russo, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. Seaman, Deputy Mayor De Castro, Mayor Berger, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I'll have a motion to approve the resolution granting submission waivers for case number SD-2983.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Eileen, call the roll, please.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
I'm sorry, you're not eligible, sorry. Deputy Mayor De Castro.
Yes.
Mayor Berger.
Yes.
And Chairman Nash.
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized, thank you.
Thank you. We have no other submission waivers for tonight?
We have no other resolutions, we have one submission waiver. No, I'm sorry.
No submission waivers.
No, I'm on the wrong agenda, I'm sorry.
Just one, one application tonight.
Yes. Okay. Before we start the application, all right, I just wanted some, there are some people in the audience who may not have been to a planning board meeting. I want to explain to the people that we have a process. We are governed by the municipal land use law of New Jersey, and the way this board operates is that the applicant will put on one witness at a time. At the end of that witness's testimony, the public will have an opportunity, after the Board has questioned the witness, the public will have an opportunity to ask questions of that witness. That means if the civil engineer is up, can ask him about the stormwater and any other issues. What I ask is, don't ask the civil engineer an architectural question, all right? After the applicant has completed his case, and if there are any opposition attorneys after they have presented, then the public will be given an opportunity to speak. At that time, you can speak and you can say anything you like on the application. But I want to stress, this is a process, so everyone gets a fair opportunity to speak and be heard. If there are any questions? If not, first case then is case number SP-1039, Howell Family Apartments LLC. It's for preliminary and final site plan. It's application of Howell Family Apartments LLC. As applicant, I'm Rabbi Israel Maia Ha Cohen, Rabbinical Seminary of America and New York Religious Corporation as owners, seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct 72 affordable rental apartments within nine two-story buildings as well as an office/community building with a recreational area and a maintenance building on premises known as Block 135, Lot 26, at the intersection of West Farms Road and Fort Plains Road. This application was scheduled to be heard on November 16, 2017, when it was carried to December 7, 2017 with no further notice. On December 7, 2017, this application was carried to January 4, 2018 with no further notice. On January 4, 2018, this application was carried to January 18, 2018 with no further notice. On January 18, 2018, this application was carried to February 15, 2018 with no further notice.
Chairman, before we begin, I have a question.
Yes.
I believe that this is under litigation right now?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't hear you.
Oh, is this, is this case in litigation right now?
No, not this case. Let me explain procedurally. So the ordinance that was adopted has been challenged and is in Superior, pending in Superior Court, not the application. Obviously, we haven't heard the application yet. The plaintiffs in that case, and I spoke to their attorney, Mr. Gazarovski, I said, if you would like, I mean, the court rules require you to file a motion for a stay in order to, to stop this board from hearing this application. Mr. Gazarovski agreed that that's the process, but he and his clients determined that they would not avail themselves of that option. So in the absence of an order requiring us not to meet, we have an obligation to meet. And if we don't meet and we determine not to hear the application, time will run out and then the applicant can apply for an automatic approval from the court.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, John Junko, appearing on behalf of Howell Family Apartments LLC, which is an affiliate of the Walters Group.
Mr. Junko, just before you continue, are there any other attorneys here tonight who would like to enter an appearance? Okay, go ahead.
First of all, as a result of those snowstorms and all, we did renotice for tonight, and that notice was filed with the Board. So I noted, heard when you said that we didn't renotice for tonight, but we did, and that's been filed and I believe it's accurate.
Is that, Mr. Cuchara, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so.
We can, well, you're both sort of correct. We did carry it without requiring further notice. Mr. Junko determined that he would notice anyway.
Right, okay.
Yeah, this is a snowstorm left a note on the wall, I said maybe you better check it out because I don't want to have a complaint.
So noted.
So this application is for 72 all affordable apartments on the location and the site we're proposing. And part of what goes on is why is this application even here, is the result of the affordable housing laws and the rules that apply not just to Howell but to all the towns in New Jersey. And what a project like this can do is provide some benefit to the town's obligation to provide affordable housing. So while there's litigation still going on in Mercer County and Ocean County, all of which affects Monmouth County, and you, I mean, you personally, but the town of Howell, they have an obligation to report to the court their plans for meeting it and so forth and so on, and those things are all underway. But this project being 100% affordable offers some significant opportunities here if the Board is inclined to approve it. In the first instance, if this was typically a set-aside project, then there would have, in order to set aside 72 apartments at 20% set-aside.
Mr. Junko, I don't know that everybody understands the parlance, so when you say a set-aside project, that means that there's a certain number of units that are market rate and a certain number that are affordable?
It's, yes, in fact, let me step back then, in a project where it is a proportion of the total units built, that and its proportionate based on either of two rules, a 15% or a 20% standard. And the reason I bring that up is because with the all affordable project and being rentals, the township is entitled to two credits for each of those apartments. So even though there's 100, or there's only 72 units there, there's 144 credits that the township can benefit. Now, if that was what I just called a set-aside, which is also inclusionary, in order to get 72 units at 20% set-aside, that project would consist of an additional 360 market-rate units. And at 15%, it would be an additional 480 market units. And when the town is eligible for double credits, in effect, these 72 units replace the need of the township to deliver, if I may say it that way, 720 market-rate units at 20% set-aside and 960 market-rate units at 15% set-aside. And I wanted to address this because I understand there's a lot of questions going on about these obligations. The next issue that I think I'd like to just address for a couple of minutes is what these units are used for. And under the affordable housing rules, they're to be reserved for applicants to live in these units with a much-reduced rental rate. And it's for low and moderate-income households, and the units have to be priced for them as affordable. And these rules and price limits are set by COA and the state and the various counties and the courts in this case. They are deed-restricted, meaning that they can only be used for that purpose, and that deed restriction and the benefit to the township accrues for 30 years. Now, what that also means is that the people who can live there earn anywhere between 30 and 80% of the median income in this region. And the state had determined various regions throughout the state, and were, of course, in the Monmouth, Ocean, Mercer region. So in this instance, here in Howell and in this project, a two-person household that would live here could earn between $22,636 a year up to $60,363 a year. And those are numbers that are set out by the state, if you will, and they apply to Howell, Freehold Township, et cetera, you know, all the surrounding towns. And that leads to some real interest on who these tenants could be. And I can't say it's going to be Mr. Smith or Mrs. McGillicuddy, but what I can say is that typically our observations are that these consist of teachers, nurses, social workers, paralegals, police officers, government and public work, employee facilities, retail and sales-type of people seem to be the most populous in these type of apartments. There are young people starting out or older people who are on a fixed income, and people that were denied housing for some other reason due to the lack of ability to find housing they can afford with their incomes. So the state, many years ago during the Mount Laurel cases, determined that this was a constitutional obligation of New Jersey to provide these housing, this housing, excuse me, this housing, type of housing, for the citizens. And that's what started all of this with what was called Mount Laurel 1. Today, they're up to Mount Laurel 4 because it continues to litigate and go through the courts. And you're all familiar with the fact there was even a state agency created under the Fair Housing Act called COA, Council of Affordable Housing, which has since been disbanded, and we're now under the rule of the courts. And in each county, which is, it's called a visonage because Cape May and Atlantic County share, but each visonage has a judge that's assigned to these type of cases, and Howell Township is subject to Monmouth County and Freehold, and every county is subject, each town in each county is subject to those rules. So that's really what we have going on. In this instance, there's an objector who's filed several lawsuits, first, at the first time was going through to attack the ordinance and subsequently the approval, and now is Mr. Cucharo and reported to you, that case is also pending. There's been no final decision. Now, you've also advanced ordinances under which we have reapplied to you, and those are in challenge, that's the case we were just referring to. So this application tonight is seeking final, preliminary and final approval for the project, 72 apartments, all affordable, in nine buildings, and it's set up on a 12.4-acre site, and we're going to go through and explain all that to you in the typical fashion. But I wanted to give you that little background because I think it's very important to recognize that this isn't, these credits flow to the town and that there is a significant relief from projects like this to, if you will, the pressures to deliver both market-rate and affordable housing. So, for our presentation tonight, I would like, I have first Ed Spitell Jr. to talk about some of the general issues that apply to our project. Our project engineer is Steve Baggy, a licensed professional engineer. We have John McCormick, our traffic consultant, who's prepared the reports and has updated them, and in fact, just in this week has been confirming some of those reports and their numbers. And if we need information about the environmental condition on the property, we have that consultant available, that's Anthony Silva. We have our landscape consultant available, Jonathan Alderson, and our architect Mike Donovan available. We also have other representatives of Walters available for, if their questions come up. I think, however, that we will be able to present satisfactory information to you through the civil engineer, the traffic engineer, and Ed Spitell. But if there are questions that are specific, I didn't want to not have the ability to carefully and fully address them.
Mr. Junko, just before we get to your, to your witnesses, understanding that the underlying ordinance is being, is under repeal and has, there's been no adjudication yet, you recognize that your client is proceeding at its own risk, and if that ordinance is set aside by the court, that would, in the event there's an approval, that would void your approval?
We do recognize that, and the reason that we chose to, my clients chose to proceed is that there are such a number of other approvals that are associated with this project. They have been through a very extensive review from both the NJDEP, the EPA, and HUD, and the DCA in the state reviewing all of their other applications because in order to build 100% project, you need to have the assistance of credit financing and so forth, which our clients are eligible for and have been deemed acceptable, which is very important because the rules that apply, there's only a limited quantity of, quantity is wrong, number, limited sum of money available in those type of programs, and you could be a project of 100% affordable, approved by the town, but if the money has already been distributed to projects that are qualified, there wouldn't be any available to build it. Our clients have taken those steps and they are in that position to be able to proceed if the Board grants the approval and if we're successful, and I say we collectively, successful in upholding the ordinance, which I believe we will because my study of what created the second adoption showed that I'm satisfied, and I wish I was the judge here, but I'm not, but I'm satisfied that the very issue that was raised by the court as to the first ordinance has been addressed, and again, in my opinion, addressed correctly. So I hope that's helpful, and we do recognize that, Mr. Cuchara.
And also, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to amplify a point that Mr. Junko made, because I think it's important for the Board to understand, I think it's probably even more important for, for members of the public, and it goes to what that Mount Laurel doctrine is. So just in a little more of an expansive format, the Mount Laurel doctrine refers to a case, a Supreme Court case from 1975, I believe.
Yes.
And it was, it was based upon a lawsuit filed by several public interest groups and, and others, and it involved the zoning in, in Mount Laurel Township in Burlington County.
Burlington County.
So the argument was that Mount Laurel was using its zoning power in an exclusionary manner to discriminate against people who were low and moderate income. The fact that they had zoning which required large lots for a single family, it was argued effectively eliminated any opportunity for people who weren't of a certain social or economic class to move into the township. So the Supreme Court in 1977 agreed with that. They said that the zoning power, which by the way, municipality doesn't have zoning power inherently, it's granted by statute. The legislature grants you the right to zone, so they create the rules and the state creates the rules. We have ability to zone, but the overall rules of how we zone are decided by others. So they said that it was unconstitutional to, to zone in that manner to exclude low and moderate-income families. And they basically directed towns to rezone, to permit that opportunity. Towns basically said after that, you know, thanks for the opinion, but, you know, we don't really see that rezoning in our future. So that led to Mount Laurel 2, I think 1983. And in Mount Laurel 2, the Supreme Court said, you know, we told you six years ago that zoning in this manner was unconstitutional. We recommended that rezoning take place, and towns have not done that voluntarily. So they reaffirmed that the large-lot zoning, and some, some of this is not even that large, but basically not, not permitting a housing product that was affordable to low and moderate-income families was still unconstitutional, but they created what was called a builder's remedy. They said that if towns are not going to do voluntarily, we're going to provide a tool for developers to do it. And the builder's remedy allows a developer to come into a town and say, you know, your ordinances are unconstitutional and we are going to help you. And typically, that help was in the form of dense development, the set-aside or inclusionary development that Mr. Junko was talking about, where for rentals, it would be a 15% set-aside, and for, for sale units, a 20% set-aside. But the court, the court was pretty clear that developers were going to get what they call a density bonus, that they were going to be able to ramp up the density in order to subsidize the 15 or 20% of affordable units. That meant that towns were going to be subject, and they were subject to lawsuits for thousands of units, hundreds of units, you know, projects that dwarfed the ones that, that are up here. And they basically said, if you don't want that town, then you're going to have to zone to permit some of these projects. So it also suggested that the state agency, a state agency be created to set the rules, which is COA, as Mr. Junko stated. I don't think it's been disbanded, I think it doesn't function because no one sits on its board anymore. But what happened is that COA determined what they call the fair-share number for every municipality. So they said, you know, Town A, you owe 300 units, Town B, you owe 600 units, and essentially if you didn't meet that number, you were going to expose the town to the Mount Laurel litigation. So basically, that's the background that, you know, this type of application, the law that it's proceeding under is mandated from above. It doesn't, it's not grassroots, it's not home rule. There was a decision by the state Supreme Court, which was then acted upon by the legislature and Governor Kane to create a state agency, and they've determined that every town has a fair-share number, and if you don't meet it, you're going to be vulnerable to a builder's remedy litigation. And like I said, the result of that, you know, is typically high-density housing. There was a, there was an attorney, he's passed away since, Henry Hill, who had compared it to, I think, clubbing baby seals in terms of, you know, what happens to a town when it doesn't satisfy its obligation. So that's why we're here. We're not here from any, you know, indigenous action or social policy that the Township Council has. We're here because there's a state mandate from the legislature and more particularly the Supreme Court, which has been reaffirmed through many iterations of the Supreme Court, and most recently, I believe, last year, that, you know, things haven't changed. There are no changed circumstances which have altered their constitutional view of the, the mandate that this town is under. So I just wanted to be on the record that this is something that was created far above this town, you know, several decades ago, and I say mandated, you could say imposed on the town, I think that's a valid way of looking at it, but they are not rules that we are at liberty to ignore, and there are consequences that we need to keep in mind. So applicant still must prove its case, still, but I just wanted to place on the record very, you know, concisely why we're here and, and the entities that created, you know, the responsibility.
And Mr. Chairman, that made me aware of a point that I intended to raise a little later but should raise now. And that has to do with preference as it relates to who can live in these apartments. Point one is that it's been pretty well-determined that by fair share, which is an advocate for the housing activities, that, and economically, it's virtually impossible to expect single-family homes in today's world and, of course... homes in today's world, and the cost and expense can fit into the category of becoming affordable. So, almost, I'm not, I was aware of many projects 20 years ago that had affordable single-family homes. Today, I haven't seen one in the last five years that isn't multifamily in one form or another. But more importantly, about the preference for tenants, the people who will be able to reserve here, almost every town I go in front of respectfully says, hey, what about, in your case, you'd say, what about Howell residents? What about veterans? What about those people that should, that we would want to see get the preference? And Mr. Cuchero said it so well, it is not something that either Walters, my client, can decide, or you can decide. It's actually been decided by these rules. However, what Walters does do and can do is assure through a process, which Mr. Spiteel will explain, the background checks and the review of each of these tenants, because you're still able to do that. We can't, however, preference, for example, Howell Township veterans. You know, it would be an ideal group for not just Howell Township to impose, but any town, if you think about it, and we would want to do that, but we have rules that don't permit it, and those rules are marched by the advocates for the housing community, and they're not afraid to file lawsuits against the town, and I keep pointing to you, and not you individually, but between the town and our clients. So, we, I can tell you that while my clients would love to be able to grant preferences in the towns they operate in, they cannot, but they are very aware of the fact that it's important for them, for their value and the operation of these facilities, that they have good quality tenants, and likewise, I think that's something the town is interested in, because what we're trying to correct with this as a social exercise is people who are working in the workforce, workforce-type housing, those people that I, jobs or classifications that I identified, that workforce housing can have reasonable housing in a great town like Howell. So, enough of that, I think, but if I may, all my first witness will be Ed Spiteel.
Mr. Chairman, I have just a brief clarification for the record regarding the rental bonus credits. I just wanted to, just to clarify that while the project will certainly provide 72 credits through the 72 units, because the third round affordable housing obligations haven't yet been determined, and the rental bonus credits, you can count them toward that obligation, it's up to 25% of that obligation can be applied. While it's, it's impossible essentially at this point to say exactly how many rental bonus credits the town will be able to take credit for, I think it's highly likely that rental bonus credits will be yielded by this project, and I would say it'd be fair to say up to 72 additional credits.
Yes, and Peter, it's my expectation in looking at what fair share is requiring, that you're going to be, that Howell's going to be around 1,000 units. So, in any event, I should have said that, but in my opinion, you're going to be able to use all 142 credits. In fact, you could use several more than that.
Yeah.
But if I may, if nothing else, Mr. Spiteel, please.
Mr. Cuchero, could you clarify what constitution the court reviewed? Was it US or the state?
No, it was the state constitution, and as a matter of fact, there was a petition to the United States Supreme Court after that, that was rejected by the United States Supreme Court, since it was a decision that rested solely upon the state constitution. Our state constitution is broader than the US constitution, and more clearly articulates that economic discrimination is unlawful in a way that the United States constitution does not.
Great, thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I may ask, if I may, a little background on the Walters Group?
Well, I think Mr. Spiteel is going to be able to do that.
Mr. Spiteel, that was basically the intent of his testimony, talk about their operations, who they are, the other projects they operate and manage, and I'm their client, of course, they're my client, I'm, of course, their advocate. I think that they're one of the best builders and operators that I've ever worked for, but you'll make your own opinion, and of course, Mr. Spiteel will address that, and if there's something that you think you want to hear further, because I was trying to make everybody's time reasonable, so we didn't spend the night overnight here.
I agree with that, so let's get him up here.
Sure.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you please state and spell your name?
Sure. Edmund, E.D.M.O.N.D., Spiteel, S.P.E.I.T.E.L. Jr.
Mr. Junko, I want to make it so that the audience can hear all the testimony. Are we picking up that mic? Or, yeah, we have a handheld mic, so between the podium mic and the handheld. Hello?
That is a mic as well.
Okay. Sure.
All right, so Mr. Spiteel, did you tell the board? I just want to, Mr. Spiteel is speaking only in the capacity for discussing the Walters Group, correct? Well, he's also going to talk about, he's going to, he, since he is an employee and a longtime member of the Walters Group, he's going to talk about the organization, he's going to talk about the operation of how they manage their apartments, he's going to talk about projects that they have elsewhere, and explain the techniques they use, and the process they take in order to investigate, if you will, or pre-qualify a tenant for their operation. So... Okay, fine, that's fine. Yes. I just want to make sure it was no technical testimony. Now, licensed professional engineer Steve Baggy will be our civil engineer, licensed professional engineer McCormick will be our traffic engineer, our architect, and landscape architect are all licensed, if we get to that point. Very good, proceed, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. As I said, my name is Ed Spiteel, I'm a representative of the Walters Group. I've been with the Walters Group for 14 years, and I've been part of the land development arm of the company, and what that means is that I've been responsible for overseeing the design and approvals for many of our developments, including single-family housing, market-rate apartments, affordable apartments such as this, as well as commercial development.
Mr. Spiteel, do you have a title?
Yes, land development manager.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly. This proposed development, as Mr. Junko had stated, contains nine eight-unit residential buildings, along with a roughly 2,900 square foot standalone clubhouse and associated amenities. The bedroom mix is as follows, it's 14 one-bedroom units, 43 two-bedroom units, and 15 three-bedroom units. They range from about 800 square feet for a one-bedroom, 1,100 square feet for a two-bedroom, and a little over 1,300 square feet for a three-bedroom unit. We propose, if we're able to obtain site plan approval, we would build, own, and manage this community, just as we have several of our communities in the region, which leads me to the Walters Group and who we are, and how long we've been doing this. In terms of affordable housing, we've been developing affordable housing since roughly 2008. Off the top of my head, I think we have roughly a dozen, maybe 14, communities such as this proposed one, in various stages of development and operation. In that development pipeline, it's, we probably have about 1,000 units that we build, own, and manage. We handle everything ourselves. We have no, we have never sold one of these communities, nor do we intend to here. We pride ourselves on our construction expertise, our development expertise, and the ability to very carefully manage these units. And part of the management speaks to qualifying tenants, and it is a very onerous process to do so. It's, I'll try to boil it down to, and tell you that it's a three-step process. It involves three separate groups that have to approve a prospective tenant, and it first starts with our certified property managers. They get, they receive the applications from the prospective tenants, they run a credit check and a criminal background check. If either of those don't pass muster, they fall out of the, they fall out of the queue and cannot go any further. Assuming they do pass the required criteria, they go to a third-party group, a group that we use called Spectrum, and that third-party group that has nothing to do with us, they review the files, more information is required to be submitted by the prospective residents, that gets reviewed, and assuming that passes muster, then, and only then, does it go to NJHMFA, which is the New Jersey Housing Mortgage and Finance Agency. Their folks look at it, and then, assuming everything checks out, the tenant is, you know, is suitable, right, qualified to live in one of the units. That process that I just described takes three weeks, and as I said, it's very onerous. It takes a lot of time and effort, and it's, you know, you don't go through that as a tenant unless you really want to live somewhere nice, and we have an awful lot of interest in people like that, who want to live in our communities.
Ed, could you give a little bit about the experience of Walters' organization in terms of the location of some of your other projects, and the construction, and when it was formed, and how you got to be owning, managing, and developing affordable housing?
Sure, I can go as far back as you'd like me to. The Walters Group started in the mid-1980s as a single-family home builder in the Long Beach Island area, and over time, morphed into different sectors, you know, more tract single-family building, commercial development, primarily all in Barnegat Township and Stafford Township, Ocean County, which is a place where we have several affordable housing communities now. We have a couple in Lacey Township now that are complete and operational. We have one in Jackson Township that's under construction, one in Delanco Township, Burlington County, that's under construction, one in Mount Laurel that is nearing construction completion. So, we have a vast footprint in this region, and also Burlington County area.
Now, with regard, with regard to the Howell project, Ed, could you describe some of the operations that will go on there, and some of the characteristics?
Sure, you know, besides the layout with the nine eight-unit buildings and the clubhouse, why don't I get a little more into the clubhouse and what that means? The clubhouse would contain leasing offices, it has a top-of-the-notch, a top-notch, excuse me, fitness center, it has, it has all sorts of exterior amenities, including a basketball court, a tot lot, swing sets, so active and passive recreational amenities. It's, it would be a privately-owned community, the roads would be private, they would be our responsibility to maintain. It has a centralized trash enclosure area, so that you don't see unsightly dumpsters scattered all across the site, and, you know, aside from the testimony that I think you might hear from others, I think that pretty much describes it.
And the personnel, the staff each of these sites, they are Walters' train, Walters' employees that have gone through your employment review process for approval?
That is exactly correct. We have our own property management division, and we would have one here, a property manager on staff, we would have a maintenance person available on call 24/7, and because we have a regional presence here, you know, they would be very responsive to any tenant's needs.
I have no other direct questions of Mr. Walter, uh, Mr. Walters, Mr. Spiteel, and I'm ready to, Mr. Spiteel is available for any questions, and of course, then we'll move right on to our civil engineer. Does the board have any questions for the witness?
I have one question. Does management live on property?
The management would not, most likely not live on the property.
Is management responsible for the cleanup of the basins on the property?
I believe the answer to that is yes. I think you might hear from our civil engineer, but there should be a stormwater O and M manual that's required to be filed against the deed of the property, so unless there's an ordinance in this town that requires...
Municipal.
Okay, but would most likely, I believe it would be us.
I don't think it's most likely. It's a private basin, it's not proposed to be dedicated to the township of Howell, therefore, based upon my review of these plans, it would be maintained by your property association.
That, that's fine, I was only, in some towns, they make you pay a fee and dedicate it to them, but I agree, it's our responsibility.
Anyone else have questions? So, if I understand your testimony correctly, you cited one community, one site, I believe, in Jackson, that is currently operating? Is that correct?
No, we have, I can, why don't I start off, and I'll tell you the ones that are operating. The first, the first one that's operational, the first one that we constructed was in 2009, and that's in Stafford Township. It's within Stafford Park, that's 112 units. We have a 52-unit family community in Barnegat Township that's operational and has been for five or six years.
I just want to make sure you're answering the question that was asked. Mr. Chairman, were you asking generally, or were you asking how many affordable projects?
No, I like this answer, I want to hear the specific ones that are operating.
No matter whether they're market rate exclusively or...
These are all affordable ones that I'm speaking about.
All right, all right, I want to make sure.
So, we have the 112 in Stafford Park, 52 in Barnegat, which is Whispering Hills, an additional 94-unit family community in Barnegat, which is called Laurel Oaks. We have, let's see, off the top of my head, you're right, that Jackson is under construction.
I'm just looking for the ones that are operating.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's 118 units in Lacey Township, right off of Lacey Road, next to their municipal building. I know that the first phase of it is fully operational, the second phase of it is, it might be halfway.
(inaudible).
If I think of some others, I'll let you know.
That's fine.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tom's River, we have a senior community that is roughly, I believe it's 102 units.
That's age restricted.
That is, right, that's age restricted and affordable, that's operational. We have another in Barnegat, a senior community, also affordable, 70 units, that's fully occupied and operational. I believe that covers it, but...
All right, well, if you think of anything later, you can always add.
I certainly will, and I would invite you to be happy to share with you the addresses of those, or coordinate site visits, or invite you to call the mayors or administrators of those towns and check on us.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. The last time we heard the application, it was my recollection that you may not have management on site, but you do have a maintenance staff person that's there 24/7, is that true?
We will have a maintenance per, it hasn't been exactly determined where the maintenance person will live, but we will have the Jackson community up and operational, and if it's not here, it'll be 10 minutes down the road in Jackson, and that person will be available on call 24/7.
You're going to have to talk to your traffic engineer about that 10 minutes, but...
Any other questions from the board? All right, if not, I would like to open it up to the public to ask any questions of this witness. If you have a question, please step up to the podium. You need to state your name and address and be sworn in. Not for questions.
Sir, do you swear? Wait, sir, again, just to reiterate to Chairman, this will be for questions only, but I'm going to swear you in now, so when you come up at the end, we don't have to do it then. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you state and spell your name and give us your address?
My name is Carmine Longo, C.A.R.M.I.N.E.
Mm-hmm.
L.O.N.G.O., 16 Bracken Court, that's 1-6.
Okay, Mr. Longo, go ahead.
Mr. Spiteel.
Yes.
You class, you stated that Walters Group will do an extensive background check, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, this is criminal background check also.
That's correct.
So, what crimes are classified for a projected tenant... So what crimes are classified for a projected tenant to get rejected? Is it a felony? Is it a misdemeanor? Is it a conviction? Are they violations? How do you determine what crimes are being rejected? How do you determine that?
I don't have the definition of a crime. My attorney here might be able to tell me what the exact definition is, but what I can tell you is that something like a felony would absolutely dismiss somebody, something like a vehicular thing or a DUI, unless I'm misstating it, would not.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good. Hey, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state and spell your name and give us your address.
Jackquiel, J.A.C.Q.U.E.L.I.N.E. Everett, E.V.E.R.I.T.T., 13 James Hollow Court.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Spital, of the other properties that are either completely finished or in process of being built, how many of those are also land leased properties?
We own all of those properties.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
You're welcome.
Hey, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, please state and spell your name and give us your address.
Catherine Leibel, K.A.T.H.R.Y.N.L.E.I.B.E.L., 58 Newbury Road.
Okay, go ahead.
How many other properties do you guys have that are going to be tax-free for 50 years?
I'm not sure I understand your question, what you mean by tax-free.
That you guys are not paying the taxes, that the townspeople will be paying the taxes for those tenants that are living there and having to pay for their children to go to school and having to pay for the rest of the roads that you guys don't own to fix those and replenish those and deal with all of the congestion that we're now going to have if this property is built.
It sounds like you're referring to the pilot and one way that I can answer that question, I can tell you that all of our other communities do in fact, with one exception, have pilots. The rates of those pilots are far less than the rate of this pilot and that on a macro level, in terms of what Mr. Vandencuy and what others have said about the town satisfying its affordable housing obligation, I would suggest that the impact of building 960 or so units to get the same 144 credits would have a far worse impact on the schools and infrastructure than the 72 units we're proposing.
I don't think that was the question, Mr. Spital, but I think the question was, you know, are you, do you contribute to the community that your tenants will be living in? So I think when you mentioned the pilot, you know, it sounded like your answer was going to be yes because there's payment that goes to the town.
That's correct and that payment goes directly to the town.
And my other question is, is so if a tenant gets in there and they didn't have a background, any criminal, criminal background, and they do then eventually get one while they're there, what happens to them?
That's a very good question. They get evicted.
How quickly are they evicted?
They're still entitled to due process.
Mr. Spital, how would you become aware of it? If someone goes and is convicted of a crime, what's the notice apparatus for that?
That's also a good question. If I, if I could confer with my head of property management and give you that answer or I can either do so now or do so a little later in the testimony.
Why don't you wait till everyone has asked a question?
Okay.
I have a follow-up question. Any payments made under a pilot, 95% of the tax collected goes to the municipality, is that correct?
I believe 100% of it does.
No, the county gets five, I think.
Okay, 95%.
And every project you have, you pay taxes that are assessed?
That's correct.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you state and spell your name for the record?
Tina Smilik, T.I.N.A., last name Smilik, S.M.I.L.I.K. I live at 33 Charles Street. I think I can clear up this pilot for you because I sat with the CFO and we went through numbers and I sent them all to the council and it is 100% going to the municipality according to our CFO. And I did send a letter that to all council members and nobody got back to me as if my information was correct, but the CFO, this came from the CFO. Also, according to the CFO, $1 million will go to the township over 50 years, whereas 13 million would be lost in revenue to all the other entities in the taxing time.
This is really for, well, to form it into a question, why don't you ask if that's correct?
Do you feel that is correct?
No.
No, I, no, I don't.
Do you have numbers to contradict our CFO?
I do have, do have numbers on me.
Well, first of all, we don't have the CFO here for him to actually verify that.
I have the email actually that I could actually get for you if you needed it.
Well, when it comes time for testimony, you can certainly submit whatever you'd like.
Okay. What is the turnover rate when somebody enters into this program or enters, gets an apartment? How long is the usual time period they're there for?
I don't know the answer to that question. I could speculate, but I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
Okay. When you first, when they first come to you, you do a means testing on them. You test their means to make sure they're eligible to go into this program, right?
We look at their credit, criminal background check, assets, things like that, yes.
But a means testing to make sure they fit in between this, this, this...
There are certain income levels to the units and you're right, that there has to be a certain level of income to be in a certain unit.
So you means test them to make sure they reach that income level, correct?
There's an income eligibility analysis, is that correct, Mr. Spital?
That is correct.
Okay, how often is that done after the first time?
I don't think it's required to be done. Mr. Spital or Mr. Junko or Mr. Vandencuy, you don't lose your unit if you happen to become more fortunate in the future.
So if somebody goes over this means...
That's correct, yeah.
Somebody goes over the means, they can stay in there and be making $100,000, say?
The answer is yes. I'd find it unlikely that that would be an attractive unit.
I don't find it unlikely. I know a couple of people that are doing it.
Well, the answer is yes, but they would have to have met the eligibility and it goes back to what I said before about where these laws come from. That's not a local law.
Oh, I understand. I just wanted it on the record.
Well, I know you may understand, but I think it's important that everybody understands here and, you know, who may be watching, that these issues are all very clearly laid out in UHAX rules as well as in the administrative code and there's no discretion that can be exercised either on the part of the township or this applicant to go back and say you are now, you know, making more than you were when you were qualified originally, we would like you to leave so we can bring another worthy, you know, tenant in. It's not something that, that we're permitted or they're permitted to do.
Okay, and so I'm just saying, so after they're originally in, we don't ever have to means test again?
I believe that's the cadence here.
And can they rent these apartments to anybody else? Like if they leave, can they substitute?
No.
No, they can't.
And how do you check that?
We have management staff and, you know, we...
Do they go door-to-door? Do they check every year?
There's an annual recertification process, but I can tell you that the tenants also, you know, we police it and the tenants self-police their neighbors.
I would just like to know how you police it. Do you go door-to-door? Do you have them open the door and walk in? Do you see that nobody else is there? Do you police the door in the year?
We don't, we don't go into their units.
Mr. Spital?
Yeah.
Just as a matter of apartment maintenance under our state regulations, aren't you required at least to go into every apartment like once a year to make sure that, you know, health codes and habitability requirements have been satisfied?
Yes, twice a year, I'm being told.
Right, and you would coordinate with, you just wouldn't burst in? You would probably coordinate with the owner?
That's correct.
During those visits, isn't it likely you would be able to determine whether the proper tenant is in there?
Yes, we would.
Okay, so there's no way that somebody could be living there that you do not know about?
No.
Okay. And how often do you background check, like?
Ed, I can't see.
Just once.
Correct, that move in.
Okay, and then that background checking, how, I wasn't really clear on how that background check, how you know if somebody got a felony after you did the background check? How are you notified?
We're not, we're not specifically notified.
You're not notified, so somebody could get a felony after your original background check and still be living there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor, he referred to a yearly recertification process.
Could you explain the yearly certification process to the board?
Yeah, please.
I'm not specifically familiar with that.
Well, in that process, each of the tenants have to certify that their conditions meet the criteria that they initially presented or something similar to it and meet the standards that are then enforced.
Yes, that's my understanding.
And if someone's income increases, that's the time that the state learns of it and you learn of it.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm the, excuse me, the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state and spell your name and give us your address.
Kathy Novak, N.O.V.A.K., 16 Stratton Drive.
Is it Kathy with a K or a C?
It's Kathy with an I, K and I. Mr. Spital, I heard you say the business Walters Group has been building since 2008. Is that correct?
Since the 1980s.
Okay, so 2008 was what?
Was the year we constructed our first affordable housing community.
Okay, so you're in the affordable housing business since 2008, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so is it common practice for the affordable housing units throughout New Jersey to do background checks on every applicant?
I believe it is, at least under the program that we do it, yes.
Is it common or is it required?
I know for tax credit affordable housing communities, it's required.
It's required, okay. And I heard you say that if someone has a felony, that they would automatically be excluded. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so we're already excluding people from affordable housing if they had a felony 20 or 30 years ago, but they've been working and turned their life around?
I believe that's correct.
So affordable housing will be exclusionary? The other thing I wanted to bring up was that you own and manage these communities and that you haven't sold any, but the possibility exists that it could be sold at any time, correct?
We have no intention of selling. We never have. Anything is possible, we have zero intention of selling.
I understand tensions versus reality and what's possible in the future and that, you know, it could be sold and it could be sold to anyone.
It could be sold. It could not be sold to anyone. The tax credit, there's a tax credit investor and there's very specific requirements between the tax credit investor, between New Jersey Housing Mortgage Finance Agency and suffice it to say, it could not be sold to anyone. It would have to be a very qualified affordable housing operator and owner such as ourselves.
And the last question I have is your relationship with the owner of the land. You own the affordable housing community. You build it, you own it, you manage it, but what is the connection to the landowner?
We are the contract purchaser of the property.
The landowner will be the seller to our clients.
When you say contract purchaser, that means when you've acquired whatever approvals are necessary to actually construct the project, you would close and then you would be the owner of the property?
Mr. Good Chair, there are a number of contingencies in the agreement, all of which have to be satisfied, including the environmental condition, title...
Well, I guess where I was going with it is being a contract purchaser means at some point you anticipate being the owner of the property.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
When this project, in order for this project to be operational, Walters Group will be the owner of the site.
Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name and give us your address.
Colin Campbell, C.O.L.I.N.C.A.M.P.B.E.L.L., 700 West Farms Road.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Campbell.
My question is, it's my understanding that some of this project is being funded with Sandy relief money, is that correct?
That's correct.
If, is there any preference being given to the applicants for actual victims of the Sandy hurricane?
There is. It's a good question. For the first 90 days of lease-up, there is a preference for any resident, not just of Howell, but any resident who can document Sandy damage that...
How is that calculated?
I don't know how it's calculated, but what I could tell you is if somebody has an insurance claim or evidence of it, that they can prove it, that, you know, we would run it past New Jersey Housing Mortgage Finance Agency and...
So there's not a percentage, the exact amount of money's funded compared to the exact amount of tenants?
I don't understand the question.
In other words, if you're getting 60% Sandy funding, shouldn't 60% of the tenants be Sandy relief victims?
Mr. Spital, if I could, if, Mr. Spital, over here.
I'm sorry.
If I could say that in a different, I think the question is, if you got 72 qualified applicants and 72 people that were displaced by Sandy and all 72 people passed the background check in the first 90 days, all 72 people that are suffering from displacement of Sandy would be in those units and that would be it. You'd be 100% occupied, is that a...
That's absolutely correct.
Thank you.
And also, Mr. Spital, on that, once again, you know, I'm going to be a broken record tonight, that is not a municipal program. That is a program, I believe, funded through HUD and Community Block Development Grants administered by the state and they all have their own rules associated with it.
That is correct as well.
So there's no discretion for you really and certainly no, really no role at all that the township plays in it?
That's correct.
In fact, Mr. Spital, you don't have discretion to put anyone in that hasn't passed through the process administered by HFMA.
That's correct.
Is there anyone else who would like to ask a question of this witness? If not...
Mr. Chairman, may I call Steve Baggy, please?
In a moment. I've been asked if we can have a five-minute recess, so we're going to recess for five minutes and then you can bring your next witness on.
The board will now recess. The planning board will now reconvene.
I know, right? Seriously, right?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to offer Steve Baggy, he's our licensed professional engineer. I'm going to offer him as an expert and I'll ask him to be sworn and present to you his credentials.
Very good.
Please stand.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Steven Baggy, S.T.E.B.E.N.B.A.G.G.E.
Okay, Mr. Baggy, could you advise the board, are you a licensed professional engineer and advise them of your education, training, and experience in the field?
I am a professional engineer. I've been so since September of 2009. I received a bachelor's degree from Drexel University in Civil Engineering in 2005. I've been employed in the land development, development engineering business for approximately 15 years and I provided expert testimony to several of the boards in the state of
All right, we will accept him as an expert in civil engineering.
Thank you.
What I would like to understand is, he is not the signer of the plans.
Well.
So could you explain that to us, please?
Certainly, so the plans were signed by Ed Spital Senior, these plans were submitted in August of two thousand seventeen while I was employed at Spital and Spital, all the engineering at Spital and Spital was done by either myself or the signee of the plans, Edmund Spital Senior. Mr. Spital passed away in September of two thousand seventeen, so I've since taken the project on, at the start of the year, I actually, I switched firms and the project came with me. So while I did not sign the plans, I could have signed them, it was either Ed or I to sign them, we worked, I would say, equally on this project.
So you're representing that you were fully involved with the supervision of the preparation of these plans?
Yes.
Okay, we will accept his qualifications as an expert in civil engineering.
Thank you. Now, Ed, I know you just said it, but you or others under your direction have prepared these plans, the exhibits, and the submissions to the town.
That is correct.
Now, Steve, could you go forward and just talk a little bit about the location of the property identified by lot and block and street address, and also its current condition?
Sure, the property is located at the intersection of West Farms Road and Fort Plains Road, at the time of the submission, it was located on lot twenty-six, block one thirty-five. Shortly after it was submitted, a subdivision was approved, the lot is now known as Lot twenty-six point zero one, it is a twelve point four six acre lot, it was approved on September seventh, two thousand seventeen, the subdivision. The development area is the same exact as it was as it was submitted, the lot that it's located on has just been updated. Currently, the site is vacant and wooded, there are several old foundations and some dilapidated buildings that will be removed as part of the project.
Do you have a copy of the filed subdivision map, Mr. Baggy?
I do, it was filed on November seventh, two thousand seventeen, case three, eighteen sheet twenty, and it holds all the recording information.
I'd like to ask this be marked into evidence.
Hey, we are up to, I mean, A nineteen?
Yes.
And this is the subdivision plan, Mr. Junko?
Yes, it's a minor subdivision, prepared, uh, signed by Blue Marsh Associates, land surveyors and planners, it has all the signatures on it and the recording information from Monica.
Will close the filed minor subdivision plan?
Filed minor subdivision map.
Map.
Thank you.
Mr. Junko, do we have that in our package?
I'm not sure that we do, it has been referenced, it was filed in the county after the original presentation that we went through earlier in twenty-six.
But that subdivision is reflected in your plan as being the subject lot?
Oh, yes, it's the, it's the exact same lot, we just perfected that portion of it.
And that was marked as A nineteen?
Nineteen. So would you describe the development?
Sure, the proposed development is a one hundred percent affordable property, there are seventy-two multifamily affordable apartments proposed, there are fourteen one-bedroom, forty-three two-bedroom, and fifteen three-bedroom units, they will be in nine buildings, eight buildings per unit, there's also a community clubhouse and rental office, as well as a maintenance garage.
Now, are there any amenities associated with the project?
Yes, there's an internal courtyard area with a tot lot and a basketball court, some picnic, and a picnic area.
Now, describe the project to the board identifying the points of access, well, first may I ask, as we look at the screen, some behind the board and to your right, does that reflect, and is that a copy of the plans that you prepared?
Yes, it is.
Okay, can you describe to the board the outline of the project and the access?
Sure, the project is bordered by two local roads, Fort Plains Road and West Palm Road, or West Farms Road, sorry, Fort Plains Road is at the top of the screen there to the west, and West Farms Road is on the right-hand side to the north of the property. There is a right-in, right-out proposed on Fort Plains Road, and a full-access driveway proposed on West Farms Road. The access road that loops through the site has been designed in accordance with RSIS standards for a residential access road with non-parallel, non-parallel two-sided parking. Each of the courts that are located off that main access road are considered multifamily courts by RSIS and designed in accordance with those rules.
Can I just stop you there for a moment, because I want to put my broken record back on? When we talk about RSIS, we're talking about is the residential site improvement standards, those standards were adopted, I think, in nineteen ninety-seven, and what they effectively do is create the residential development standards for every municipality in the state. We all used to have our own parking standards for residential projects and road widths and things like that, the state took it away and supplanted its own regulations. So when they talk about being RSIS compliant, that's once again something that was mandated and imposed by the state on this municipality, and we do not have an ability under that law to require them to do anything more than what the RSIS requires. We can ask in certain instances, but that is the maximum and the minimum that an applicant is required, and the town has nothing to do or to say about it. Continue.
I would agree, RSIS controls not just Howell, but every town in New Jersey. So Steve, proceeding along, is this application in conformance with the RMLD dash-two zoning ordinance that applies to the site?
Yes, it is.
And do we request any variances for this application?
No, no variances.
Could you, deviate a little, could you just describe by walking around the site that's on the board, the buildings, and physically describe it, starting wherever?
Sure, as you come in west, the West Farms Road entrance to the left, you're going to have the residential buildings, they follow around the perimeter, just to the right of that entrance is the clubhouse, trash enclosure area, and maintenance garage, the trash enclosure's been located near an entrance, or near the exit, it's convenient for the tenants to stop there, walk in and drop their trash off, there are, there's room for two trash compacters and one bulk trash, the bulk trash is typically used for move-in days, it's for items that are just too large to fit in the trash compactor, the trash compactor, residents bring their trash there, the maintenance facility or manager would be there to help handicapped individuals not capable of doing that themselves, the keys for the trash compactor are held by the maintenance crew, it's run as needed and picked up at least weekly, more if needed. Continuing on, you have additional residential buildings on either side of the access road all the way up and through the Fort Plains Road exit and entrance.
Now, does the applicant request any waivers, design waivers?
Yes, there are, well, there are two waivers that don't apply to RSIS, and then two additional waivers that are really controlled by RSIS.
Could you describe to the board?
Sure, I'll go through the RSIS, I think, requirements first. So in the CME letter on page four, it's three B, I believe, it's section one eighty-eight dash one oh six F, residential site plans should be designed with a thirty-six-foot wide main access road and a thirty-foot wide parking aisle, what we have here is a twenty-four-foot wide aisle with eighteen feet parking spaces on either side, as I said previously, that complies with the RSIS requirements, the way RSIS is written, that, that regulation really replaces this section of the ordinance, so I'm not, I don't think a waiver is actually necessary, but we're asking for it if it is indeed required.
Do you understand our fire bureau has made comments on that as well?
Yeah, I have not spoken to the fire department, I know during the first round of this, it was discussed, he acknowledged that unfortunately for his purposes RSIS is the, is the state-mandated rule, I don't think he agrees with it, but that's what we're required to follow. The second RSIS waiver would be section one eighty-eight dash one oh seven A, and that relates to the parking space size, parking spaces in your ordinance are required to be nineteen feet wide, or nineteen feet long with a twenty-five-foot aisle, RSIS requires a nine-foot wide by eighteen-foot long parking space, which is what we provide, and the twenty-four-foot wide aisle complies, as I said, with the residential access road standard. Moving on, I'll go to the last one on this page, it's, for any conservation easement or wetlands buffer, stream corridor, shall be posted with monuments, the site plan currently has signs placed, and we're going to withdraw the request for this waiver, we'll switch the signs to monuments that are required in the ordinance, they mark a three-hundred-foot buffer from the west branch of Turtle Creek Stream, which is located to the east of the property, it's actually off of the site now, was located on lot twenty-six, is now located on the remainder, which is twenty-five point oh one.
So let me just clarify, you will provide the monuments that the ordinance requires rather than the signs that you had proposed?
Yes.
So we effectively can withdraw that waiver request?
The last waiver, and this is one we're actually requesting, is for light intensity provided at ground level, shall be a minimum of zero point three foot candles anywhere, all the parking lot areas and sidewalks that lead to the buildings meet the requirement, the letter points out that the recreation area and sidewalks leading to the recreation area in that courtyard area behind the office.
That being shown on the plan now, Steve?
Correct, behind building four and building eleven, there, we're not, there's no light back there, it's done intentionally, the, our client doesn't wish to encourage use of these features at night, we prefer them to stay daytime activities, and we don't light them for that purpose, so we would request that waiver.
Are you providing the house-side shields that were discussed in the report?
Yes.
Is management going to provide closure to that tot lot at nighttime?
I do not know the answer to that question, I don't think there's a lock on the gate there, it is fenced, I'm not aware of the ability to lock it.
Is this typical of the operation of those other facilities that were cited, I mean, aside from the senior citizen, that you have these areas dark at night?
Yes.
Generally, I would say yes, I mean, sometimes depending on how these sites are situated, some parking lot lights may spill in there and provide light, the way this is in a courtyard area behind everything, there's legitimately very little light that spills back there. So they're never intended to be lit, but that doesn't, I'm not going to say that some light from the parking lot area can't spill into those areas on some of the other properties.
But there are, I think the chairman's question were, is that what's on the other projects, and as we're going through those approvals, in fact, we've asked for that waiver at every site, is that correct?
Yes, I don't know that every town has the requirement of book handles everywhere, usually, a lot of times it just applies to your parking areas, but we do not.
No, my question is, do the other facilities, irregardless of not whether it's required, do the other facilities have areas that are dark at night?
Yes, there's no specific lighting for the tot lot or recreation areas.
You don't find that dangerous?
I wouldn't, no, I mean, we don't want people there, when you say, you know, it's dark, a lot of public parks are dark, I think.
Not where there are residents?
Well, I think it's fair to ask Mr. Baggy about this project, but.
I am asking about this, Brian, actually.
You're not familiar with every other park that does or doesn't light?
I mentioned it.
Yeah, I did mention it, he did.
I don't find it particularly dangerous, we have discussed this with the client, and if this is something that is a big concern, I think they would be willing to light it, it's a preference to not, and that's where we prefer to go, maybe we could talk about security lighting of some sort, that may, you know, take care of your concerns.
Personally, I second the mayor's concern about this, Brian, you want to weigh on this?
Yeah, I mean, I agree, I think it's a security, security issue.
I think the consensus is, Mr. Junko, that the board would like to see some type of lighting back there.
I mean, this is not a.
Mr. Chairman, I understand that point, let me, I imagine we'll have a break before we conclude again, and I will review that with my clients.
I just want to be clear, though, in listening to the testimony, that this is a design preference, and there's been no statement that it's an unnecessary cost generative requirement, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
I think the client's main concern is that it casts off light that would impact adjoining properties, the adjoining lots, or the adjoining apartments, and it's not intended to attract use at night, because it is not a monitored park.
Okay, I just want to get the unnecessary cost generative on the record.
All right, so, now Steve.
But just before you move on from that, though, if I could just, if you did comply with that, the application would be completely conforming, variance and design waiver free?
That is correct.
Okay.
All right, so I'll defer to the further question until I get a chance to speak to our clients on that about whether or not, I'm just going to ask Mr. Baggy after we discuss whether it's reasonable under the requirements of the statute for a waiver. Will the application seek any modifications from residential site improvement standards to exceed standards?
No, the project has been designed to comply with RSIS standards.
Now, there was a comment in the review letter concerning privacy fence along the ground floor rear patio areas, can you address that comment?
I think the question is, will privacy fencing be permitted on the ground floor units, there's none proposed, and none intended to be there, and the tenants wouldn't be allowed to modify the exterior of their units on their own.
So basically, any modifications to the buildings would have to be done by Walters Group, not by an individual tenant?
That's correct.
Now, have you had a chance to analyze and confirm the proposed building heights?
Yes, the letter points out that the building height's supposed to be measured between the average distance between the ridge and eaves, that height is twenty-five point seven feet for the apartment buildings, twenty-two point four feet for the clubhouse, and thirteen feet for the maintenance building, the maximum allowable height is thirty-five feet, so we're well within the allowable height.
The review letter from CME also requested a parking fence, a parking fence at the area south of building number six, and along parking opposite the northern end of building number six, have you reviewed that with the clients, and you, how would you respond to that?
Yeah, it's actually just below where we're looking here, the building is the next building down. And if you go, right, it's those four parking spaces that you're looking at on the left-hand side of your screen, there you go, fences proposed in front of any parking space that also is directly in front of a unit, those spaces were a little further away, so we didn't add the fence, we'll agree to add it, however, to take care of those concerns. So those four spaces that you see without a fence will, a fence will be added to address it, and when I say fence, maybe, I know this came up during the first one, I think the concern is drivers accidentally going forward instead of backwards and running into the building.
So if you could change your terminology, we typically have bollards put in, so are you thinking about a?
So what we're proposing, and there's a detail, it's a six-by-six timber, pressure-treated timber, and a concrete foundation with a vinyl sleeve over top of it, and then a little two-foot kind of picket fence that dresses it up. We understand the concern and wanted to provide something that takes care of that concern, but putting bollards up in front of every parking space isn't really, it's not very good-looking, so.
Newman, will the proposed design hold a clare from going through the fence portion?
Yeah, I mean, it's cemented into the ground, so essentially the posts are going to act as.
So the post is the bollard.
Correct, and then you have the fencing in between it, and just to clarify, that complies with our ordinance, our ordinance doesn't say it needs to strictly be a bollard, but that a safety barrier needs to be provided.
Thank you.
Did the review letter request additional bike racks to be installed, buildings one and three? Buildings 1 and 3? And if so, can we comply?
Yes, the letter did. It also asked about compliance with Ordinance 188-107E. The site plan is currently drawn, is lacking enough bike racks per your ordinance. We'll agree to add those at Buildings 1 and 3 as well as other locations that are appropriate. And we'll add enough that the total amount is satisfied. There's a calculation, I think it's based on the parking.
Yep. The letter also, the review, engineer review letter also identifies additional approvals that need to be obtained. Are we in process with that, or have we obtained them?
Some approvals have been received, others are outstanding that we will agree to achieve as a condition of approval.
Please list the ones that you don't have approval?
Currently, I believe the only one that we don't have any kind of approval is the sewer. It's currently going to be submitted to the, it's been submitted to the MRSA, which is the Manasquan River Regional Sewer Authority. We got that approval about two weeks ago. So we're preparing to submit the plans to the OCUA, which is the Ocean County Utilities Authority. Once their approval is received, then we send it to the DEP for Treatment Works approval, and that'll be the final.
Is this a gravity main or forced?
It's a gravity main. There's an existing manhole located in Secretariat Street, which is west on West Farms Road. It's a little side street. There's a manhole there. It's deep enough that we're able to get to it via gravity. The sewer main, if you zoom out a little bit on that drawing.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, the fact that we've gotten to Manasquan River means that it's been reviewed and approved by the sewer department here in Howell Township and voted upon for further approval. So it's just working its way through the process. After we get through Ocean County, then it can go to NJDEP for operation, construction and operational permitting. But it's been approved here, and it's-
This, John, this sewer is owned by New Jersey American Water, so it's been reviewed by their department, and they sign the forms that are then submitted, you know, to the agencies that follow. So you can see the sewer here. Unfortunately, it's so large that it's split into a couple different sheets. The sewer main starts down below near where the clubhouse is. So you can kind of see the first manhole right there picks up the two buildings there, the laterals, and it follows the access road through and out. It goes down West Farm, or Fort Plains Road, and then down West Farms Road where it ties into the existing manhole I'm talking about. That's shown on Sheets 11 and 12, if you wanted to look at it.
Is there any sewer coming off the maintenance garage?
There is a, I believe there's a bathroom in that facility, so yes, there is a sewer lateral for that.
Are there any floor drains in that garage?
I do not know.
What's going to be, can you describe the maintenance garage?
Sure, it's a maintenance building. It's meant to store, I believe they keep various appliances, things that tend to break the most, so they're handy, maintenance tools, things like that.
Any type of hazardous materials for the property? Gasoline cans?
I would assume gasoline cans. I don't know that for a fact, but yes, I would think so.
And you don't know if there's floor drains that may discharge the sewer?
I do not.
Mr. Junko, would you be able to produce a witness that could address that? Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay. Now, you've also had an opportunity to review the letter prepared by CME and the comments contained in that. Is that correct?
Correct.
And are there any issues that you would like to discuss with the board? Are you in a position to advise that you can satisfy any outstanding technical comments?
I believe all the technical engineering comments can be addressed.
Now, one of the things that we have there, Mr. Chairman, is our Woodlands Management Plan, and we recognize that there's been an assessment proposed, which our client understands is accurate. There is a question as to whether or not that's an appropriate assessment to an affordable project, whether it's cost generative or not, and our clients have made, are reserving any rights that may accrue there. But for the purposes of the amount, the amount is not in dispute, nor is the methodology used to assess it. Sherry, you're okay with that?
Yes. Essentially, they're saying they're not asking for relief, but, you know, they may talk about the ultimate cost in a different form.
Now, there was a review letter identifying on page, item number seven on Page 5, concerning an easement that had been in place on the site. Are you familiar with that?
Yeah, when we started the project, there was an existing easement that traversed the site, which has since been extinguished.
And was it extinguished by a termination of easement and general release that was filed and recorded in the Monmouth County Clerk's Office on December 4th of 2015?
It was.
I'm going to ask that this be marked as a 20, Mr. Chairman. It's a copy of that discharge so that the record is clear as that question. Fine. Mr. Newman, have you had an opportunity to review that deed?
That's the deed, I'm sorry, the deed for-
That vacated deed?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and you're satisfied?
Yes, I am.
So, Steve, in summary, this application complies with the ordinance, no variances. The only waiver issue is one that we're still going to discuss a little further concerning the lighting of the recreation area, and other than that, it's in compliance with RSIS or ordinance standards that are applicable.
Yes.
I have no other direct questions, Mr. Chairman. Anyone from the board have questions? The clubhouse, what are the hours for the clubhouse?
I do not know the hours of the clubhouse, but I think somebody else would-
I will address that, Mr. Boyle, through another witness.
Yeah, the Fire Bureau's site plan review dated 9/27/2017 has not approved the submission. Of course, they don't agree with the 30-foot-wide operation of, 30-foot-wide roads. They also have some concerns about the fire hydrants between Buildings 3 and Basin 2, and they also have a request for detailed utility plans for off-site improvements showing water main extensions and any new or existing fire hydrants.
Can you address that, Steve?
I believe the off-site plans are part of the package that show where the water main's going. It's also going to Secretariat Street, where it ties in. It loops through the site, back out, and then connects to an existing 16-inch main very close to the intersection of West Farms Road and Fort Plains Road. We can certainly look to check to make sure all the existing hydrants are shown. It's possible that one is missed. As far as, I'm not familiar with the letter. I don't know that I've seen it. As far as the hydrant location, is it requesting a, just in a different location?
Unfortunately, I'm not a fire expert, so I-
No, I didn't know, you were reading from the, I don't know if the letter specifically said what it-
Mr. Baggy, if the fire official's requesting that a hydrant be relocated, are you unable to do that?
Yes.
And if there's, in fact, an additional hydrant off-site that isn't located on your plan, can you locate it on the plan?
Yeah, we will double-check with the surveyors to make sure everything that is existing is shown.
So, Mr. Chairman, if those are the issues, they can be addressed. If it's a matter of relocation or even adding one, our client can comply. No intention not to satisfy the location of the fire official. The issue of the street, I think that there is a jurisdictional issue that Mr. Cucero's already addressed, that that is determined by RSIS. But in terms of the actual fire safety issues, there will be 100% compliance with that letter if it isn't in compliance today.
Mr. Chairman, what I'm concerned about is the fact that the Fire Bureau asked for detailed utility plans for off-site improvements showing water main extensions and/or any new or existing fire hydrants. I've not seen this comment before on any other application that I can recall, and I don't know why they made it, but it must be of significance, or they wouldn't have put it as part of their not-approved or submitted. I feel it's something significant that the applicant should have went back to the Fire Bureau and gotten clarified before they came to the board.
I think what they're probably looking to do is, since they are putting in main extension, they're giving them, they want to take the opportunity to have the applicant put in supplemental fire hydrants. And if the board is inclined to approve this application, I'm assuming that we would make that a stipulation of the approval that he would have to satisfy, with the exception of the width of the street, the fire department requirement. Yeah, and if I may comment on that, I happen to think you're 100% right. However, the fire official really can't, doesn't determine the location of the sewer or water lines. That's done by, in this case, New Jersey American, and of course, reviewed by the township engineer. But what I said, and I'll clarify it again, because I want to be clear on the record, all fire suppression hydrants will be located as requested by the fire official. Fine, we're on the same wavelength, thank you. Thank you. Can I ask some questions? Well, I was just going to say, I have no other direct questions. Did you run the turning template for a fire vehicle to traverse the site?
I have not, to the date. That being said, RSIS takes into account emergency vehicles, and we followed all the requirements of RSIS. We could certainly agree to run a truck through the site to just demonstrate that it can navigate.
Yes, I would like to see that. I'm a little bit concerned about the radius of the loop road where it turns from basically an east-west to a north-south.
Okay.
So, Mr. Baggy, it's your expectation, based on your experience, that your design will satisfy those requirements?
Yes, I wouldn't expect any issues.
How do you expect that that's going to work, since you're asking for preliminary and final approval? That you would do it to the satisfaction of the board engineer, and the engineer would just report back to the board? Because I want the board to understand, since you're asking for preliminary and final, that were granted, you would not see these guys back again. You would just have to get it from your engineer that they were satisfied.
Yes. But absolutely, absolutely produce it that way. How many parking spaces are there?
There are 143 parking spaces.
And are the parking spaces assigned, or is it random?
It is not assigned.
More handicap designated areas are needed. You will put them in?
Yeah, so I believe the way it works with these, there has to be a certain number of handicap units that are already adapted. They're fully ADA compliant, and there is a handicap parking space for each building. The way the site is graded, if another handicapped individual needed a parking space, it could be given. The way these, the parking is generally a handicap space and a striped area. In order to, you flip the striping, I guess, is what I would say. And two on either side of the striping become a handicap accessible space. So there are provisions to allow us to expand the handicap spaces if needed.
But as of now, you meet the standard requirement for handicap in terms of location and quantity?
Yes, I believe we're in excess by having one per building. There's a calculation in the ADA that requires a certain number. Off the top of my head, I don't know how many that is. There are more than necessary here, though.
In the, if, in the parking spots, how many spots are per each apartment?
It works out to about two. There's 143, so we're one short of two. The way RSIS requires parking, there's 1.8 parking spaces for one-bedrooms, two for two-bedrooms, and 2.1 for three-bedrooms. Since they all hover around two, the average is typically around two, which is where we end up. I think the actual calculation is 142.7, rounded to 143.
So you have a maintenance building?
Correct.
Are there parking spots for that?
There's a garage, like a garage door. I don't know that there's any parking inside of it.
So would that mean that there would be parking in a parking spot that a tenant would need?
Well, the parking calculation for RSIS includes what they call guest spaces. So RSIS doesn't anticipate tenants needing 143 spaces at the site. It's tenants, their guests, things like a maintenance guy that might come to fix something, the office personnel.
Mr. Baggy, the parking is on a ratio basis that takes into account the operations of the site.
Yes.
Further, Mr. Chairman and Board Member, when Mr. McCormick, our traffic engineer, comes up, I think he can address that perhaps even more directly.
Are you anticipating any curb parking for overflow purposes?
No.
What, is there any things that you've put into the design that prohibits people from that?
There's nothing specific. There's no signage or painting of the curb.
Will there be Title 39 so the police department can enforce?
Yes. So I'd like to discuss the access drive onto West Farms Road, and I don't know if this is for Mr. Baggy or if it's for Mr. McCormick. All right, can you tell me how this relates to the driveway for the Home Depot? Mr. Chairman, Mr. McCormick is prepared to address it. I'd like to put that on in his testimony. That's fine. But certainly, if Mr. Baggy has a comment, he might be able to address it also.
I'm fine with letting John handle it. The Home Depot driveway is just off the edge of this page. I think there's another match line there. The sidewalk and curb extends down. If you look at the sheet that it's continued on, it extends down to the Home Depot driveway, and that's where it's located. I don't know the exact distance.
So I'm understanding that you're terminating your driveway at Fort Plains Road basically on the south side of your access. Is that correct?
I'm not following.
Your sidewalk that you're proposing, if I'm looking-
Correct. The sidewalk continues all the way. The sidewalk and curb are proposed along the entire project frontage. It starts at the little far side, a little bit more to the left, and then, like, it ends. You see the dark line? The dark line's the property line. The rectangular shape above that is the sidewalk in the right-of-way. Goes, crosses over Fort Plain, or crosses over the Fort Plains driveway there, wraps around, goes down West Farms, down to the Home Depot traffic light where a crosswalk and handicap ramp are proposed.
Excellent.
So, yeah, match line, you know, Sheet 21 would show that.
Would have any other questions?
I just have one. Are your grills part of every amenity in the other housing? And is that a necessary amenity? We have problems with these grills in town? I'm just wondering if that's something.
Well, if I may, Mr. Castro, that's an issue that comes up on a lot of these projects. And when I bring Megan up, may I address it that way? Because she's the actual overseer of all the site managers. Okay, if no one else has questions, I'd like to open this up to the public. Again, if you have questions specific to the civil engineer, please come up, be sworn in, identify yourself, and ask your question.
I'm not going to remember everyone who was sworn in, so if you come up and you were previously sworn, just let me know, and then just state your name and your address.
I was sworn in already.
Okay, just for the- Okay.
So the garage that the maintenance, for the maintenance, is that actually able to house a car in it?
I don't know. You know, if there's space, yes, to put a car in. I don't know if there's enough free space to actually put a car in. I think it's more of a storage building. Again, I think Melissa, when we bring her up, might be better to answer that question for you.
So you wouldn't know if it would be, like, if it can't house the vehicle, then the vehicle would have to take a parking spot, or it would have to sit in front of the maintenance thing? But is that going to be a zone that's not allowed because of, like, you go in front of a store, it's a no-parking zone? Is that going to be the same situation? And then it's going to have to take one of your 143 parking spots, which, we all know, most households have at least two cars, so we need at least 144 parking spots, because you've got 72-unit, 144 parking spots. Where are their guests going? Are they going to Home Depot to park? And then where are the customers of Home Depot going to park?
Well, first of all, I think I have to object to this question in the forum, and I would just offer, these are 100% affordable units, and these are income-based, and I realize that we all have more than one car, but most of these, and Melissa can clarify this- this, most of these tenants do not have the ability to have more than one car.
Well, according to you, a teacher is considered low-income housing.
Not according to me, ma'am. Please be clear.
No, no, you said that. You said nurses and teachers.
I did say it, but it's not.
Would be considered candidates to be tenants of this property.
But let's be clear, just because I said it, I don't get to make the rules.
But that's what you said.
If I was able to make the rules, I would say that.
So if that's the way it goes, if you're a teacher in New Jersey, I don't know how you're getting to work if you don't have a car. So if you have two teachers living in that household, they're both going to have cars unless they're working in the same school, which means, let's say that every unit is housed with two teachers, because we're all low-income, low-income housing teachers, right? So...
Can we hold this to a question? And I guess the question is, Mr. Junko, does this project comply with the RSI requirement for parking?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it complies.
I think there was an additional question.
The question's, where are the overflow going? Where is the overflow when they have guests come to visit them? Or they're not allowed to have guests? Like, where is the overflow going? Are they parking on the streets? Are they parking in Home Depot? Where do you think these people are going?
It comes back to the theory of a ratio.
Mr. Cucero, could you please explain the parking ratio? Or maybe Ms. Newman, could you provide some evidence from our professionals?
Well, there's no evidence that we're going to provide. We evaluate their evidence, and I think the testimony from their engineer was, and this goes back to what I said before as to what we have discretion over and what the state has imposed on us, that in drafting the RSIS requirements, the assumptions that were taken into account were that these people, or any residents, not just affordable residents, would have, you know, guests, they would have maintenance, and those, and things like that, so that the numbers that are attributed to each bedroom take those things into account. What I think you've heard from the applicant is, that's what the RSIS says, that's what we're doing. So...
I understand that, but in reality, there's going to be overflow somewhere.
But you asked another question I just wanted to follow up on. Is their parking permitted just in front of the?
The maintenance house.
Right, the maintenance house, or are those cars?
Or is it going to be like a no-zone parking area?
That's what I'm asking. I don't think they answered that question.
There is no specific striping or signage there that would prevent it.
I hear that. I don't care about specific striping.
No, it's not intended to be permitted to have a car park.
Not intended, I don't, is it prohibited?
Yes, it's prohibited.
Okay.
So therefore, they'll be using one of the 143 spots?
Yes.
The easement that's in the backside of the property, I guess you consider, does that have a fence around it?
The buffer?
I don't know, wherever it looks like.
Like that?
No, right over there, on the left-hand side. Yep, that, that's the easement, correct? No, go back.
It's a basin.
Yeah, does the basin have a fence?
It does.
And is it its own fence? Like, it's its own fence, right?
Correct, correct. It encircles the basin.
What kind of fence is that?
It's a split-rail timber fence with wire mesh.
And it's how high?
Four feet.
So a little kid could eventually figure out how to get in there.
It's possible. It's a normally dry basin. It's not meant to be wet.
And how often is that going to be cleaned by your facility?
So the DEP requires a maintenance plan for all these types of projects. The inspection schedule is, it's at least four times a year, and then after every rainfall of one inch or more, it has to be inspected. Those inspections cover whether it's functioning properly, if it's holding water, it needs to be corrected. Is the outlet structure structurally sound? Is the fence up and working properly? Any deficiencies are noted and must be corrected.
And seeing that it could possibly hold water, are you going to continuously spray so that we don't get an uproar in mosquitoes and other bugs?
Mosquitoes, addressing a mosquito is part of the maintenance plan. There's no spraying that's part of the maintenance plan. The idea is, the basin should function as it's designed, and if it's not, to correct it. It's a sand-bottomed basin. The infiltration rates that we got from the test pits were favorable. Wouldn't expect any issues, but at times, you know, mud gets in there. That can clog it and would have to be addressed. That's the purpose of the several inspections that would be required every year.
So besides checking it for water holding, is it going to be cleaned if people start using it as a dumping ground?
Yes, I mean, trash removal, mowing, has to happen, you know, once every three weeks. The basin bottom is supposed to be tilled and cleared of vegetation once a year. If trash finds its way in there, yes, it's part of the maintenance plan to clean it up.
Thank you.
And the basin will be capable, with the percolation rate, of emptying itself within the 48-hour period?
Yeah, it's actually, it's a 72-hour period, but if I find my calculations, it's much, this basin is designed to drain, and I believe, let's see, that's basin three, in about 15 hours, that would expect it to be dry.
Thank you.
Hey, please just state your name and address again.
Armin Longo, 16 Bracken Court.
Okay, go ahead.
Before I make a few comments, can I ask Mr. Spital, another question in regards to the background checks?
I would say not now. If they bring him back up for something.
Okay.
But we're going to keep it to this particular witness right now.
Okay, I live about a half a mile from the project, West Farms and Fort Plains Road, and at that intersection, currently, it's an accident prone location.
Well, this is actually testimony that you're giving, but if you have a question for him.
No question, I'm sorry.
Okay. At the end of, when everybody finishes, there'll be a portion for that. Hey, were you previously sworn, sir?
No.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about the, this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name and give us your address.
Paul Dorato, D-O-R-A-T-O, 27 Firestone Drive. I just have a couple of questions about the zone, or how this is zoned. It's an RML-D-2, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That particular zone, it's not an overlay zone, and...
Can I stop? Is this witness qualified to discuss this?
Well, he'll be able to tell us if he is or not. Is that a question you can answer?
No, Mike, don't know the question yet.
No, I was asking the witness if that was a question he could answer. Do you know if it's an overlay zone or not?
Do you know, is it an overlay zone or not?
I do not, no.
Mr. Junko, are you going to put on a planner?
We don't have any variances. I didn't intend to put on a planner.
Well, let's hear the rest of the questions and maybe, you know...
My actual question was with a variance, because in this particular zone, you have a, you're proposing a maintenance garage and a community center, okay? That, this zone's not zoned for that, so wouldn't that require a variance?
Hey, that's more of a legal question. Mr. Junko, can you address that?
It is permitted in the zone, the RMDL zone anticipates multifamily development.
Well, Mr. Junko, I think, if I could extrapolate on what I think your argument is, that those are not principal uses on the property.
Well, those are accessory uses that are permitted.
Right. Well, you didn't say they were accessory. You just said...
I did not say they were accessory.
They are accessory uses.
They are.
They are customary and incidental to the principal use, which is the apartment building.
Multifamily housing.
And I believe this is the case, but I would ask you, Mr. Junko, or if Peter wants to chime in on it, I think, I mean, don't COA's rules and regulations encourage amenities like that on the property?
Yes.
They do. Yeah, they would encourage amenities such as a maintenance building, the tot lot, for instance, all the different things that you would want to see in a multifamily development.
But that's their answer.
The next question is, is this particular zone is for 100% affordable housing? Isn't there one unit that's market rate?
No, all 72 units are affordable.
The, there's one, there wasn't one for the owner that would be, or community manager?
I think Melissa would be better to answer that question. If the community manager lives on the property, my understanding is, they would also have to qualify for an affordable apartment.
All 72 apartments are affordable? If the manager does reside on site, he or she would be qualified?
Is that your way of saying you're not going to pay her that much?
Um, I guess, but it is the market, and they will, if, no, I suspect that she will not live there, because she's going to end up making more money than that. Walters pay very well.
So then that would be 71.
No, let me clarify. All 72 are affordable.
Okay. Back to the parking, I got the explanation, but wouldn't there be extra spots needed for the community center?
The community center is intended for use by the residents only, so the people that are using it are already into the calculation. And I would also point out that the parking calculation takes into account guest spaces. These aren't reduced for affordable housing. A market rate project would be subject to the same parking requirements we're required to follow here.
Uh, I believe so. I don't know if you're qualified for this, just out of curiosity. What is the total population anticipated in there? Because you mentioned there was, you gave numbers on single-family.
I think, again, Melissa would probably be better for that answer. I think there are, I believe there are requirements for how many people can live in each one of these units. I think that's part of the rules. I don't know them, though.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, ma'am, if you just place your name and address on the record again?
Sure, Tina Smilik, 33 Charles Street. You mentioned waivers. Are these above the waivers that were already approved by this board a couple months ago? Are these newer than those were approved?
Let me just specify what those waivers were.
Thank you.
Those were submission waivers. That was information that needed to be provided to the board before the hearing started. The waivers were not for any design or zoning purposes.
But they did say they could include variances that go along with those waivers in the future, or no variances will be?
No, no.
No variances on those previous waivers?
Those previous waivers were like, if they didn't want to put like a North Arrow on the plan or something.
Okay.
It had nothing to do with the construction of the project.
Okay. Next question. There's a buffer between your property and Block 143, Lot 43, which is owned by the United Tower, whatever Academy for. Okay, what is the buffer in between those?
The buffer on that side of the property is 30 feet.
Okay, that is now a qualified farm, getting qualified farm taxes? Would that not need to be 50 feet now, because it's qualified?
I do not know.
That did not pop up in the Farmers Advisory.
It just happened about, within the last year, they just got approved for qualified farmer's taxes.
There's a specific buffer requirement in the ordinance that created this project. So that's the requirement that you would follow, rather than a general requirement. You follow the specific one.
So they do not have to comply to the 50-foot buffer to our qualified farms?
They have to comply with the ordinance that created their zone, which has the 30-foot buffer.
So our council put us in, where it's our farms are in.
I don't understand that statement, but...
Council approved the ordinances for the zoning for this, correct?
Yes.
So if council approved the ordinances, then they're allowing zoning of a 30-foot buffer, not a 50-foot buffer, to our qualified farms? They're the ones that allowed it.
They provided, they adopted the ordinances, so whatever you want to draw from that, you can.
Okay. Top lot, what size is the fence around the top lot?
I believe it's 36 inches. I'm not positive. There's a detail on one of the detail sheets.
Okay, and that will go with our playground safety laws in New Jersey?
Yes.
Okay. And then, you were talking, and the community center, how many people can be held in that community? What is like the fire limit on that? How many people can go in that?
I do not know. I believe somebody else is probably going to be better to answer that question for you.
Okay, okay, so just, we'll have enough parking spots for people. Can they have guests there that, if they have a birthday party or something, can they invite outside guests to this?
I do not know. Again, I'm not, it's not my testimony. I think somebody, I think somebody else would be better able to answer that question for you.
I think that you need to ask that question to Melissa when we bring her up.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
Mr. Junko, we're having a little bit of a difficult time hearing you.
Yes, I think that would go along with the hours of the maintenance garage, the grills, and just your question.
Who will be answering that?
Melissa.
And what is she?
She is the Walters Organization's manager of the managers, if you will, of the various projects.
Okay, great, I'll come back then, thank you.
Hey, were you previously sworn, ma'am? You swear or affirm the testimony about the, this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
If you can just get closer to the mic.
Yes.
And if you could state and spell your name and give us your address?
Patricia Isbrecht Kelly, my last name, I-S-B-R-E-C-H-T hyphen Kelly, K-E-L-L-Y, 615 Fort Plains Road, Howell, New Jersey. First of all, I did not receive a certified letter, and I'm your next-door neighbor for this meeting at all. And that's a requirement, because I'm within 200 feet. Next, um, did you ever sign a?
Hold on, hold on. I would like to have councilor verify that.
I can verify it. I didn't receive a certified nor anything in the mail.
We have to look at what the records that we have. You are the owner of the property, or would it have someone else's name on it?
I am the owner of the property, yes. It would be Patricia Isbrecht.
You're certainly on the radius list. We're checking on the slips now. They did, and this is certified by the post office, on January 22nd, they sent you a certified, via certified mail, the notice.
No notice. The last notice I got was before Christmas for the one that was canceled, so.
Well, all I can, all I can tell you is, this is...
Does the post office have a certified slip for me that was signed?
They're not required to show that. They're required to show that they sent it to you under the law.
Okay, because each one I got required a signature.
If I could, well, I'm trying to explain what the law requires. The law requires them to send out to the 200-foot property owners via certified mail the notice. The only thing that the law requires is that they show that they did send the notice. The law does not require them to provide a slip showing that it was received. They have provided a slip that shows that it was sent out in the applicable time period.
Walters Group or the post office?
The post office. There is a stamp from the post office that shows...
Never made my mailbox.
Under the law, this is what they're required to do. We couldn't, we can't decline jurisdiction based on bad notice. And again, that's not our rules, that's the statute, what the legislature has put out.
So every certified that was sent out, except this one, was sent to my house and put in my mailbox?
All I can tell you is that the post office...
Okay, I'm just, just asking. I find it odd, but I'm just asking.
Look, I don't know what happened to the letter. All I am here to do is tell you what the law is.
I didn't receive it, and I did not receive a certified to go pick anything up at the post office.
We are, again, we are bound by the laws that were given, so...
Was a farm waiver ever signed?
I don't understand what that is, a farm waiver.
To acknowledge that there are already existing farms in the area. It was asked in a former meeting in the records, and they said, yes, they would sign a farm waiver.
I don't have a recollection of that, and this is the first meeting for this particular application.
Okay. Well, I'm requesting a farm waiver be signed?
What is a?
For the farms to protect the horses in my backyard.
And what would be the contents of the farm waiver? I'm confused.
There is some kind of farm waiver to acknowledge that there are existing farms, and they are aware of it in the surrounding area.
I think that's the item that was identified in the Farmers Advisory Committee meeting, if I'm recommended that the committee, that this be put in the final resolution and stipulation, all prospective purchases of the property that is adjacent to an active farm to be advised of said use within 1,500 feet, and also be advised of the right to farm ordinances required by ordinance.
Can they sign that?
I don't think that's a waiver, but, Mr. Junko, can you place on the record that you are aware?
Well, I can confirm that, not that I am aware, but I'll also confirm that our client, the applicant, is aware, and we have no intention or reason to dispute another owner's use of their property. owner's use of their property. If the horses get loose, we'll give you a call.
Well, I think, you know, one of the purposes of that is that oftentimes, you know, people who move next to farms, you know, when buying property feel it's bucolic and nice, they don't necessarily understand there is a smell associated with it and things like that. So the purpose is that people walk in with their eyes open and to dissuade complaints to the township regarding, you know, things that the owner of a property may think are nuisance but are common to farming practices.
Well, I think what you're talking about now is a notice situation to the various tenants as they occupy. Is that?
So the, that's, I mean, with that, it's not going to completely allay your concerns, but if they specifically put the tenants on notice that there is a farm next door.
I think the owner of the property would need to sign.
Well, the owner of the property is never going to live there. So it's an entity, it's a corporate entity. And.
So the corporate entity needs to sign a farm waiver of some sort?
There's no waiver. They're not waiving anything, and neither are you. What they're, what they would be.
And then they need to make sure all the tenants are aware of it so they don't complain.
Well, that's what Mr. Junko just offered you, that they would provide a statement to new tenants that there is a neighboring farm and that there are, you know, conditions that are associated with it. What they've done here tonight is they've placed on the record affirmatively that they're aware of your farm and, you know, the issues that are associated with your normal activities.
Okay, and the, I guess, the Q Farm at Block one thirty-five, Lot forty-three, no longer needs a fifty-foot buffer as well?
I would say it's not no longer, but there is an ordinance that was adopted for this particular project, and it delineated what the buffer requirements are, and the buffer requirements are thirty feet.
So we no longer need the fifty feet to protect the far, surrounding existing farms in the area?
To understand what this board does, this board's only job, according to the statute, is to determine whether they have complied with the applicable ordinances and standards. And if they have not, they have to place proofs on the record that they're entitled to relief. This board does not make judgments about, you know, whether more is needed or less, or whether they disagree. It merely, and this is under the statute again, it only determines whether there's been compliance or not.
Okay, so there will be no fifty-foot berm dividing for any A R E two property either? Because it's about it right next to?
They are, they have placed on the record that they comply with the applicable ordinance for their property.
Applicable ordinance. Okay. Next question. Will they be placing any type of extra barrier or mound to protect my horses from their property? I was at a meeting, and down the road, they were required to put, place a fifteen-foot mound of dirt to separate the properties?
None proposed.
And none proposed means I need to propose that you do that to?
Mr. Junko, I think now there is a request by Ms. Kelly that you place something on the property to.
In between my property and yours?
It's not something we're going to do, and it's also, it's, that would be in the buffer area. We're not, we're not allowed, according to this ordinance. That would create a variance.
Okay, but you need some kind of mound in between the horse, horses and your property, I believe.
I don't, I don't know that there's anything in the ordinance for this zone that stipulates that.
I'll have to find the zone because I was at a meeting previous where someone was building right down the road from me, and that was a requirement, and the council agreed to the requirement and said there needs to be protection from the horses and the other property. So I'll find out more information on that, I guess. And then my last question is, I have a well. I need to know how much lawn maintenance chemicals you are going to be using, as well as if any kind of bug deterrents are going in that basin, because that can greatly affect my well. You're getting city water, I still have well water, and I pay taxes.
The lawn maintenance of the whole site, I can't speak to. Mowing of grass and fertilizer use is addressed in the basin maintenance manual. Fertilizer is generally.
I don't use fertilizer on my property because I have a well.
Right. The use of fertilizer isn't prohibited by the maintenance, but it's disencouraged. It's better to keep it healthy and not need fertilizer. There are stipulations in the maintenance manual that allow for fertilizer if deemed necessary, and I don't know the exact terminology off the top of my head. It's not, it's not great to use it, and the maintenance plan tries to discourage its use, but I can't say that it won't be used.
So the existing use of chemicals on your property with city water could greatly affect my well in the future?
I, I'm not qualified to answer your question.
Okay.
Ma'am, what lot are you?
I am six fifteen Fort Plains Road. I am the triangle right next to the property we're discussing.
I believe she's Lot thirty-five.
I believe that. I'm Lot thirty-five and thirty-six, I believe.
Okay, so, so let's talk about that buffer a little bit, because you are correct. It is common for this board to have conversations with applicants of what can be put in a buffer and what can't be put in a buffer for the purpose of providing shielding from a proposed application to an existing home.
Because I am A R E two.
Yeah, I understand. So, so.
Anything.
I get it. So, so to that point, I'm just curious why we wouldn't be wanting to have such a conversation now and figure out what a remedy could be in order to enhance that buffer for the items that this adjacent resident is asking us to look at.
Is this a site input or a site output soil site, from a soil standpoint?
The intention of our design is generally to balance the site. We don't want to spend money bringing dirt to or from the site.
So your design, is it, is it balanced, or you're bringing some in, or are you exporting?
No, I mean, the goal is zero. You know, we run calculations, and we get close when they're doing the work. Generally, if there's any extra, I think they would, would place it around the site to, so that it was a net zero.
So have you not done those calculations yet?
The calculations are done. What I'm telling you is, they're general in nature. You know, we have a grading plan, we have existing contours. We can do the math and figure it out in a general way. To get it down to the, you know, cubic foot is, is difficult.
So have you done those counts?
Yes. This is intended to be a net zero site. No dirt coming or going.
Thank you.
So, so let's get back to the question that you asked. What are some options of what could be done within that buffer, not necessarily related to grading, that would accomplish some of the same things that this resident is asking for? Enhance plantings?
Let's take a look exactly at the area, and our clients are willing to try and do something to alleviate that, that can fit, be aesthetically pleasing, and not be overly cost generative for the affordable project. So I think we can certainly do something if we can look at where the plan is and see what the input might be.
My line is right adjacent to your property, right there, yes. All the way down, Lot thirty-five and Lot thirty-six.
So you have no plantings in the buffer. By definition, you can't. And if you were, it would require some relief, correct?
That is correct.
And this board has had a habit of, if putting such things in the buffer, we would also understand that we would be willing to provide that, that relief if that was necessary to accommodate that residence. So.
Is this a issue where a fence is preferred or plantings?
I, I don't know, but looking at the site plan, I do understand why this is a concern for this resident, and as we've done in many other applications, I would defer to your professional and our professional to put some comments on the record as to what could be done to satisfy this resident.
We're certainly willing to investigate it and.
Mr. Junko, it looks like in the area that she abuts, there's a section that there, there are no existing trees. Right, right there, the wood line comes in. So we certainly could add, you know, buffer material to that section.
Want to supplement that, is what you're suggesting?
Right, so you could add evergreens over there. Further down, then the woods come in.
Let me just stick with that for a moment. How do, how do I describe that area?
It looks like it's not tree.
Well, it is wooded. Am I correct?
The non-wooded portion of the buffer would be a good explanation for it. There's the tree line definitely.
Steve, hold on a second. I thought you said this was, that was, the wood line came out across the property.
The wood line comes into your property?
Yeah, and you wanted to.
This area.
Where the arrow is now.
See where the arrow is?
That area, supplement the trees that are there, correct? So it is already have some wooded there.
That is, that area she's pointing out is not wooded. The, to the right of that line is the existing wooded line. To the left of it on, on her property is not wooded.
Wait a second. No, 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 no. We have one person testifying, one person pulling plans up. Was that even entered into evidence?
No.
So sit down, please.
Our landscape architect.
All right, but we're only going to have one person at a time. We still have rules. We're going to enter things in.
I volunteer to come up to try and answer the question. He's not intentionally trying to upset him.
You want five minutes?
Let's just look at it and see what we can do to accommodate this issue.
Can we, can we make a suggestion here? All right. Do you want to have an offline discussion between our tree expert and your landscape architect?
And we'll do that now and then come back to it?
Yes. And obviously, you would be participating in that conversation.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, that's a great idea, and we're underway.
Well, before that, Ms. Kelly, do you have anything else?
No berm of fifty feet for farms, you already stated. Stein, he attested to the horses in the farm waiver I was looking for. We discussed the no certification scent, touch the chemicals, fifteen-foot mound to separate the property would be the last thing. So yes, I'm done.
All right, so ma'am, if you go over and participate in that discussion there, let's see if we can resolve something to your, your satisfaction.
Okay.
And you're going to come back and put that on the record as to what you've proposed and whether this resident agrees to that?
I think so, but let's give them a little bit of time, and then.
I understand.
The chairman can call us back as he chooses, but I think what I'm saying is, my client's willing to do something that makes sense and balances between everybody's interests.
Just let us know when that has concluded, and we'll, we'll deal with it at that time.
And I'd like to make a phone call to my husband really quick before I discuss.
Fine, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Take as much time as you need to resolve it.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I have one question? Is there a Class One waterway that goes through this property?
It's located to the east of the property. It's no longer, it's, it was on Lot twenty-six. It bisected the site. Where the subdivision line is, it's actually off of the project. The three-hundred-foot buffer for that C-one water is on the project.
The west fork of Turtle Brook, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so your basins eventually will end up in Turtle Brook, or no?
No, there's actually, the, so there's a, it's hard to see on that. There's an outlet structure kind of towards the top of the page on the basin. There's a ridge that runs kind of where the three-hundred-foot buffer is. It extends out, and it eventually turns back more towards Fort Plains Road. There is an emergency spillway on that south, so if the basin were to fail, the emergency spillway would, would go to the creek. The location of that emergency spillway was actually, the New Jersey D E Ps, they reviewed the site because of the C-one water, and they're, they asked for the emergency spillway to be on that side.
Do you have your New Jersey D E P approvals?
I believe there's one condition still pending, but we have conditional approval.
You know what that condition is?
Mitigation land has to be provided as part of the flood hazard approval. The actual piece of land and the deeding it over is still in question.
And do you have inferred groundwater flow direction?
Based on, on the topography, generally, you know, it would go away from West Farms Road towards the south of the site?
Next gentleman?
Sir, were you previously sworn?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board? Is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name and give us your address.
James Gerard, J A M E S, G E R A R D, forty-four Arrowood Court. And that, Arrowood is one word, A R R O W W O O D.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Okay. All right, so what I've heard as far as the individuals that could potentially move into this development, they are vetted. There's all sorts of rules and regulations about that, but the income seems to be, from what I remember, somewhere between the low twenties and the mid-sixties. I take it that's a household income?
Yes, the answer is yes.
So, but once that's done.
And those are, those are two categories, one being the low income and one being the moderate income.
Okay, okay. But essentially, that's the range. Okay, so, but once you're in, you're in.
I don't, I don't know the rules.
Okay, so I qualify, I'm a single guy, I'm twenty-five years old, I qualify, I get selected, I'm in?
Yes.
Okay. So there could be seventy-two units, there could be upwards of two-hundred-and-fifty people eventually that live in this development. There'll be a bunch of kids, they'll be using the services of the schools and, and everything else that's provided by Howell Township. Got you. People get married, people have kids, so there's increasing population in there. There are summertime parties because of holidays, because of all sorts of events that happen that they want to share their new digs and happy about, you know, that they've raised to another economic level, and they now are homeowners, so they want to bring everybody in.
Do we have a question here?
It's no.
Yes, there is a question.
It is a rental project.
All right, so, so here is the question. It seems, it seems that this, the builders are certainly building to the minimal specs that are required. I've heard nothing to indicate that they're going far beyond what is being required by them. So my question from a safety position, from fire, from police, from anything, is that when these events occur, which they will in people's lives, and you have a clubhouse which will encourage social activities, and all these other individuals come into the complex to party and have a great time, where will you be putting those cars of all those individuals that come into this development? And of course, we're not even talking about the additional traffic issues that are being created by the development anyway. So I see no additional parking beyond the minimal requirements that you're showing on the plan. Nothing beyond that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so therefore, everybody, I guess, lives in a glass tube, and really, that's it. There's no social aspects to this. I guess when you want twenty-five people or your family to come in, and they come in in fifteen to twenty cars, they will what?
Sir, sir.
That's the question. Where do you put the additional?
The applicant complies with the ordinance and the requirements.
Right.
Okay.
So isn't there a practicality issue as well?
We actually have an abundance of case law that tells us, the courts have told us, absolutely not. We have ordinances, we have state statutes, we have regulations, and when you deviate from those because of the practicalities, we are, we are not rewarded when we get to court. We are, we are taken to task, and it's not just an occasional case, it is every case. And that is increased tenfold in affordable housing cases. In affordable housing cases, there are, I mean, there's a lot of case law at the highest levels, the Supreme Court and the appellate division, that when you do what you're suggesting, even if the board wanted to, the courts consider it unnecessarily cost generative because it's not a requirement in the ordinance or in the statute. In case, what you're talking about, it's the state. The D C A created those rules. So it's beyond what the D C A requires, and the case law on affordable housing specifically tells us that we can't make them do more than that.
Okay, so, so just to clarify, even though you will be providing a clubhouse, there is no additional parking for anybody that actually comes in from the outside that's been invited in by the people who live in the development for whatever purposes they have.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to object to this question. This has been asked and answered like five times, but.
I disagree with that myself. I disagree with that myself.
Okay, so then make your statement to the board.
Well, no, we're not making any statements, Mr. Junko. That's at the end.
I think the statement is this.
No, no, again, I know Mr. Junko has invited you two, but he was out of line. These is for questions. At the end of the hearing, there's going to be statements on all of what you hear tonight.
Okay, so, so here's the, the question. There is absolutely no additional parking spaces whatsoever for anybody else that would come into that development?
The RSIS requirements that we're following include provisions for guest parking. The RSIS has determined that the number of parking spaces we have are not just for tenants, it's also for, it takes into account guest parking, those standards.
Go ahead. Okay, thank you.
I think you were previously sworn, right? No? Okay. Now, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name and give us your address.
Joan Osborne, J-O-A-N-O-S-B-O-R-N-E, 28 Brony Street, Howell. I had a question. About the buffer that they've been talking about, is the buffer the same thing, or at least the buffer that was mandated within the ordinance and new zone that was created for this project? Was that, is that also considered a setback? Or is, are those two different things?
Well, we'll let the applicant ask, answer that.
In this case, they're, they're the same.
Okay. Now, with regard to the farmland buffer, it's, I guess, our attorney's, the township attorney's position that the only buffer that applies is the setbacks that were created for this zone?
Planning Board Attorney, yes, essentially. Whatever is in this ordinance was specific to this property, so that's what, that's what applies.
Do you have that ordinance handy? Because I, you know, aside from this project, it may apply to other projects.
No, no, no. This, this ordinance is specific to this project. It would not apply to others.
Other projects are going to come up before the planning board and new ordinance that are going to be created, so I just want to understand whether there's something in this ordinance that says that it overrules the right to farm ordinance?
It creates buffers. It didn't need to say that. It creates buffers for this project.
Okay. Because under the right to farm ordinance-
Well, I think also, there may, there's probably something at the very end of the ordinance. It's pretty boilerplate. That any regulation inconsistent with this is, is hereby, you know, deemed to be inapplicable or rescinded or, you know, some similar language. So there was probably a statement at the very end that did say that this would supplant any other regulation to the contrary.
Can we check that and see if that's there?
It would be, it would be in the, the resolution that introduced the ordinance, I think. It wouldn't necessarily be cut out by-
Do we have that handy?
No, I don't. No.
Okay, well, I'm just going to read in for the record then, that under the right to farm ordinance, which refers you to ordinance 188-63 regarding buffers and screening, it states, "Every application for site plan approval or major subdivision approval on lots of one acre or more shall contain a 50-foot perimeter buffer or farmland buffer easement, as the case may be. Said buffer areas are required along all lot and street lines separating residential uses from arterial and collector streets, separating a non-residential use from either a residential use or residential zoning district line or active farmland. Non-residential site plans abutting non-residential uses or zones shall not require a buffer." Now, there's no question here, this is a residential use, correct?
It's a residential use.
"Where an application is adjacent to a farmland assessed qualified farm, all filed maps and deeds must contain the farm notice language set forth as follows," which is not relevant to my questioning, but- "Under subsection B, it states, 'The requirement of a permanent 50-foot wide perimeter buffer easement measured from the property line shall be provided by the applicant around all major subdivisions and shall be, in addition to any land area that is required under ordinance for use as a side and rear yard setback area for proposed residential lots.'" So, I would think, given that, that these are to be read together, and that you are required to have whatever your ordinance included for this particular project, in addition to the 50-foot for the farmland. I think they're both accounted for.
I don't agree.
And I don't think that they're created on the plans that you have in front of you.
Mr. Junko, do you have a, a position on that?
Our position is that the RMDL zone does not require the farmland buffer. The right to farm does not go off of the farmland. It talks about what the right, oh, I'm sorry. Our position is RMDL does not require addition, uh, farmland buffer. The Right to Farm Act applies to the actual farming and guarantees rights to that site. I don't think there's any actions that this applicant or anyone on this property is taking that impact right to farm. We're not limiting anyone's rights. We don't have the power to do that.
I think also, section 188-86.4G is probably relevant. Relationships to other sections of this chapter, where the regulations of the RLMD-1 zone conflict with any other regulations.
We don't hear you, Ron.
We can't hear you, Ron.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're on, but-
Uh, section, is that better?
Yes.
Section 188-86.4G. Relationship to other sections of this chapter, where the regulations of the RLMD zone can conflict with any other regulations of this chapter, the regulations contained in this section for the RLMD-1 zone shall apply. I understand your point, that it should be read, you're saying, in para materia, but I think this statement was meant to say that this is, these are the regulations, and these are the sole regulations.
So, is it your position, did you know before this evening that there was a Q farm in the area?
Yes.
Adjacent. You did. Okay, and did-
Q just recognizes the taxation level. Right to farm act speaks to the rights of that person to operate their facility on their site.
Oh, also, in section C5 of the zone, when it talks about the 30-foot buffer, the 30 feet from all other property lines, which may include fencing in addition to vegetative screening, all other buffer or similar requirements set forth in this chapter or chapter 247 riparier buffer slash stream corridor that are otherwise applicable to residential zones shall not apply to the RLMD-2 district.
And what was the chapter you're reading from?
This is 188-86.4, the RLMD zone, and this, this is the RLMD-2? The RLMD-2 zone. So it's 188-86.4, section C, subsection 5.
So, under that ordinance, then, the rights of adjacent owners were affected by the creation of this zone? And were they given any specific notice of that?
Well, there was a notice of the adoption, of the introduction of the ordinance that was published in the newspaper, and I don't, I don't know what, what happened up there in terms of the extent of the notice, different notice requirements applied to different things, but certainly there was a notice. I think that may-
Not specifically to these adjacent owners?
I don't know. I don't know. They, they may have received personal notice. I'm not sure.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we're going to continue with the, with the, the questions. Mr. Junko, can I have a moment of your time?
The board will now take a five-minute recess. The planning board will now reconvene.
All right, before you start up, Mr. Junko, the board's policy is that we go to approximately 10:30 at night. Many of us have to get up early in the morning, so we've discussed this, and you're going to put on, after we get these people with questions, you're going to put on another witness, and after the public comment, then, or questions, then, then we'll call it. We will carry this application at the end of the meeting to the April 5th meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We'll make the appropriate announcement.
Of course, I realize that the, the board doesn't want to stay. I would just say to you, our client is prepared to do that if you prefer, to try and finish tonight. We can't do that. We'll come on April 5th.
No, no.
Appreciate that.
The, the board, I, I appreciate the offer, but the board is, we've been up here for a while, all right? Many of us have to get up very early in the morning, so.
And you also, it's my understanding, April 5th, that we will be, the application on that night and be able to go till we finish.
You'll at least be first.
You, you will be first, that's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just before Mr. Junko gets going again, I was just reviewing my notes from, from everything that's going on. First, do we have a, a resolution with the buffer and the neighbor yet, or you guys are still working on it?
We had, like, there's a proposal. It's my understanding, the proposal we-
If you need more time, that's fine.
We don't, we're ready. If they say yes, we say yes.
All right, all right, that's fine.
So, can, can we bring up Ms. Kelly?
Well, I think she may be, are you ready, Ms. Kelly, or are you still reviewing? If you need more time, that's fine.
I spoke to him as well-
Well, I just need to get to the mic.
Just follow-
I spoke to him as well, but I think I do need to speak to my husband and need a little bit more time, because I need to protect my liability from anybody at that development coming over, looking at my horses, and possibly putting their fingers through a fence. If they get bit, then it's my liability.
The short answer is, you need more time.
Yeah, so I need more time.
Okay, well, they're coming back anyway, so-
Okay.
You don't need to answer tonight.
Will I be notified when they come back?
Well-
By mail?
No.
No.
No, I won't. Okay.
Nobody will be notified.
We're, we're telling you right now that we're coming back on April 5th, and it will be the first application that we hear on April 5th.
Okay.
So, so I, I'd like to hear a little of this conversation, because I suspect what's going to happen is, there's going to be something that's going to be discussed that may not be agreeable to this, Ms. Kelly, and, and then we're going to have this conversation all over again. So I understand the sidebar conversation was a request for a 15-foot berm, which physically, engineering-wise and all the other reasons is not likely, it's not applicable, it's not good design, whatever. Listening to what her concerns are and understanding that you don't have to do anything, we get that. I understand that. Are there, are there other options that are available either through the applicant or other things that the township can do? And I don't know those answers.
Mr. Gatto, I didn't understand that there was not an agreement. There, it's my understanding, there was a proposal for a number of landscape plantings in a certain configuration that our client is prepared to agree to if Ms. Kelly is able to accept it.
I'm not sure trees are going to deter children from coming into my backyard to look at pretty horses.
So, chain fences?
Right now-
The bottom line is, our client's willing to do what was recommended. If it's suitable, great. If not, we'll have to discuss further.
I'd have to discuss it with my husband before I can make any decisions, so I wouldn't be able to make a decision tonight, but I need something to protect my liability on, right now, no one is near my backyard property. It's wooded. No one goes near it.
Understood.
If this housing goes up, we all know there's going to be children, they're going to be curious, they're going to want to come on my property, so I need something.
So, is the enhanced planting the only thing that you're willing to offer at this time?
Mr. Gatto, I wasn't even part of that, that discussion.
Okay.
If, if there's a specific proposal, we can respond to it.
I'm just trying to move it along. I, I, I heard-
I agree, and I think that the best thing to do would be to see if what was recommended-
Well, Mr. Junko, I, I want to be clear also, that statement that you made, if there's a specific result, proposal that's presented, I would like to see more of a collaborative effort, you know, at, at working out a, you know, a solution rather than, it sounded like the-
I think that's what I said, Mr. Cucciaro. If, once we know what is requested, we can at least evaluate it. At this point, I think it was given to the landscape architects at the board's instruction to try and figure out something that would work.
Okay.
We're not excluding or figuring any other opportunity.
Does she have, do you have a fence on your property for your horses?
I have a, a three-
Split rail.
Split rail.
Split rail.
Thank you.
Can, when you, when you looked at the plans, can we make sure there may be some invasive plants that deter, like we do at other detention basins, to make sure that-
Hostile vegetation?
Hostile vegetation.
Don't worry, Mr.-
Well, there's a problem with hostile vegetation as well. It's going to overgrow, and then I'm going to have to maintain hostile vegetation. So, we have to consider that as well.
If, if it had no trespassing signs, would, I'm just wondering, does that alleviate your liability if someone keep, I'm just wondering?
Liability, completely no.
Well, first of all, when we're looking at something, we're not, we're not going to talk about what something does for liability or not for liability, but-
No fencing can go in that area because it's a berm, correct? No fencing can go in that area? Only vegetation, trees and such?
Well, I think what the board has expressed is that they are willing to entertain a request for relief if it's something that alleviates or solves this problem.
And I'm trying to think of one, and the only thing I can really think of right now would be fencing, because vegetation you can, kids can go through.
Well, I think what Mayor Gatto was saying is, he wanted to see where you guys were at the moment. Do you, do you have information, or, Mr. Junko, do you have information where you can communicate with each other between now and-
Well, no, I don't, but what we, just, I can now advance to the board that our clients would be willing to put a six-foot chain link, but vinyl, either green or black, along that perimeter.
Well, Ms. Kelly said she wants to confer with her husband.
I understand that.
But at least she's conferring with a little bit more of a solid option, so that, that's what I was looking for.
Well, Mr. Gatto had asked if, could we, you know, just take another step.
Thank you.
But I guess my final-
My client's trying to, my client's trying to answer the request.
We understand, but my, my final statement on this goes back to what I said before. Are you able to communicate with each other, you know, between now and then? So whatever information is necessary to exchange for that, I would recommend that it be exchanged, whether it's a phone mail, phone number, or an email, or, or whatever, because what we don't want to happen is that you come back at the next meeting and you haven't moved, you know, you haven't had a conversation about it. Mr. Chair, also, in going through my notes, just kind of-
Mr. Cucciaro, I'm going to give Ms. Kelly Steve's business card. My name and number is on the back of it.
Okay, excellent. Just, just looking at the statements from the public and sort of the chronology of events, I think there was a statement, something to the effect of, "The council may have acted to adopt this ordinance post a property, you know, being farm assessed." I'm not sure that was the case. It's, looking at what everyone has said and just understanding some of the chronology, I'm not sure there was a farm assessed property there when this ordinance was, was adopted.
Understood, Mr. Chair. All right, can we continue now with the questions?
Okay, sir, were you previously sworn?
Yes.
Okay, just state your name and address again.
Paul Dorado, 27 Firestone Drive. I just have a question if this ordinance is applicable, so I guess I'm going to ask you, actually. Is 188-106 applicable? I could read it for you if you-
It, it depends on the standard. I will tell you, that typically applies to parking and/or circulation drives, and so that's generally something that's superseded by the RSIS, but if you want to tell me the specific section.
Okay. It says, "Off-street parking and loading of the Howell Township zoning ordinance, and community center requires a minimum of 20 parking spaces plus additional spaces for any offices within a building at a rate of one per 300 square feet."
Okay, sir, the-
Part of that would be, but there are no offices, you know, in this particular building, so that- That's not an office, or that, that the or- The office is part of the, the project. Did you say there was an office in the building?
No, there's, there'll be a rental office, yes. We'll call it an office.
Right, but that's picked up by the residential site improvement standards. It's a residential project.
It's in the clubhouse. It's an accessory use.
So, you know, for, what that ordinance is talking about, Laura, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, is if there's a mixed-use project, and you have like an office, office uses like on the bottom with residential on top. Because this is a residential project, it's covered by the residential site improvement standards, which I talked about before, that were adopted by the state, and everybody has to comply with them. So, every town has like residential parking standards, because no one has really rescinded them, because there's a case that went to the Supreme Court- them, because there's a case that went to the Supreme Court that says that they're automatically preempted.
That's all I have.
Yeah.
I want to take up more time.
Pasadena Live, 58 Newbury Road, I was already sworn in. So there's 72 units, and you said there's one dumpster for all 72 units, is that correct?
No, there's three bays, there are two for trash compactors, and one is for bulk trash.
But, Mr. Baggy, explain that this is a center complex and the size of it and how it manages. It's 41 Melissa.
I'm sorry, one's a recycle container, trash compactor, bulk trash. So there's one trash compactor, and there's one bulk trash container.
And it's only being picked up once a week?
It's picked up as needed a minimum of once a week.
So when that overflows and boxes and garbage go flying everywhere, who's, like, how quickly is that being cleaned up, and if the debris goes off the property onto the conjoining roads, how quickly are you cleaning that up?
The whole thing is enclosed with a block wall, so, kind of fill up, yes, when it gets filled, they'll call and get it picked up. I do not know the timing.
I'm sure you're aware that, you know, recently we've had some really windy.
I'm going to ask that our board should be permitted to answer the question before we start the, either an argument or the next question.
Okay.
I'm sure we're aware that, you know, we do have weather that brings gusty winds, so I believe you said it's like a four-foot fence, so.
No, that's, it's like a six-foot block wall. The only one of those that are actually open is the bulk trash, and it's only used for things that don't fit in the compactor.
Well, I'm going to tell you, I lived in a complex, it wasn't an apartment complex, it was a condo complex, and majority of the people that live there didn't apply those rules, they just threw garbage where they wanted to. So there's no way to say that you're definitely going to have your tenants using those things properly. So who's cleaning up the garbage when it goes off the property?
The maintenance staff.
Thank you.
And how quickly is the township going to address the garbage that's overflowing, if it is?
I don't think we can answer that.
I mean, if I could, that would be a code enforcement violation, so it's not something that the planning board is jurisdiction of. If trash was overflowing, it would be something that would be related into the code enforcement department here, and they would take the necessary action.
And if need be, they would be fined?
I'm.
Yeah, that's part of the, that's part of our ordinance, they can be fined. There's any number of remedial measures that could be taken.
And after how many warnings are they finally caught up?
You know, I'm objecting at this point, it's not relevant to any of the testimony of the application.
Your objection is noted. They exercise their own discretion as to how they deal with it.
My name and address again.
Yes.
Tina Smilik, 33 Charles Street. On the checklist item number 50, part two, it calls for an office building containing meeting space. Can we get an actual definition of what this office building is, and a definition of what the ordinance code, whatever you use to, to describe what an office is, considering our codes and everything? You're throwing so many codes, and I don't know these codes, so I'd like the official definition of an office space compared to what they're planning, and I would like it on record to know what exactly is going to happen in this building, and that it conforms to that at all times.
Well, I can't answer the second part of your question, so why don't you start with the applicant?
Okay, can you give me?
Yeah, I'm going to have to bring up Melissa, who will give you, answer your question for you.
Is she coming tonight, or she's on April 5th?
She's the next witness up.
If you're finished in time, the board will let us. Was that?
Okay, can we get an official definition according to, okay, I'm sorry.
Can we move on to the next question while they're researching that?
No, we can cut back.
Okay.
Chairman, I would like to say that, I just spoke with Mr. Walters, and he's invited anyone who's concerned about how this particular trash situation works to visit any one of their other sites, he'll make an appointment for them and everything, because this is a system that they use, and when I bring up Melissa, she'll explain it, but they've had very good success with it, and I'm just going to say that my client does not intend to let trash flow around their property or their site.
Understood, thank you, Mr. Junko. Mr. Cucciaro, can we move on to?
Yeah, yeah, anyone else?
Is there anyone else who wishes to ask a question of this witness? Seeing none, Mr. Junko?
I'm going to call Melissa.
Okay. Testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If you can just get close to the mic and state and spell your name.
Okay, Melissa, could you, could you advise the board of your position with Walters and your experience?
Sure, I'm the director of property management, I've worked with Walters for 16 years.
And how many properties do you manage?
11 currently.
And you heard a whole series of questions that the folks had about this, since the most recent was the trash, could you describe how that operates and how it's operated at other facilities you have, and could you also advise of what one would be most convenient for anyone who wants to visit it to visit?
Sure.
I know it's a multiple question, but.
Sure, all of our properties have the compactor area, it's an area that, like cinder block.
I need you to speak into the mic, please.
Sorry, with a lot of landscaping, so it's not really visible. We have a schedule set up with our trash company, that they come minimally once a week, but if we ever see that it's getting full, we do call them out, and they come out on, on demand. We have maintenance on-site that they compact the trash, so it's not like a regular dumpster that I think people think it's a dumpster. We also have a bulk trash container, that if there are boxes or bigger items that people can put in the bulk trash container, and then we have recycling. It works very well, you know, like the attorney said, feel free to go to any of our properties to take a look.
Is it a hydraulic compactor?
Yes, it is.
And, I'm sorry, does it have any type of protection, so that if there's leakage of the hydraulic system, it doesn't get into our runoff?
I'm not sure of that answer.
Mr. Junko, you'll have somebody address that, please?
Sure. Is that, is it gated?
It is gated with FOB access.
How does a tenant get in?
With their FOB.
And each tenant is instructed that that's the way we dispose of trash, and that's how it's done?
Yes, we don't have any issues at our other properties, no one leaves it outside, there's not dumpsters throughout the property, it's a good contained space.
Hey, you also heard some other questions, one of which was the grill area, can you describe what that is and how it operates?
Yes, we have charcoal grills throughout the property, or in one area, I should say, that people can use at their, you know, at their leisure.
But do they have to make an appointment for it, a reservation?
No.
First come, first served?
Yes.
Is it a necessary amenity in your projects?
They get used frequently, people enjoy doing that, because they're not allowed on their balcony.
And what kind of issues do you have in your other developments with these?
We don't have any.
No cleaning up, no excess of charcoal, no fires?
We don't have fires, well, maintenance will go through and make sure that they're clean, but we don't really have issues.
Okay, are they charcoal or are they propane?
Charcoal.
And what happens to the excess charcoal when people are using?
Maintenance will go through, and it's part of their daily, you know, looking at all of their amenities.
So we've had incidents where the charcoal gets poured out, and it's still hot, they stay hot for a while, and you haven't had no incidents of record on issues?
No.
Is this an amenity that you must have?
It's an amenity that the residents enjoy, and we feel strongly that they should have an area to be able to barbecue, since they can't do it in their apartments or on the patios.
Could you just describe a little bit of the maintenance that you're talking about on a daily basis, what is done on this site, how it's maintained?
Sure, we have onsite maintenance, that they work regular, you know, six, they work Monday through Saturday, there's, they walk the property, they pick up any kind of trash, they do work orders, they turn units.
What does turn units mean?
If somebody moves out, they get the unit ready for the next resident.
Now, earlier someone asked about the length of stay in the affordable unit, what's your experience with that?
Our longest are Stafford Park, we've owned for 10 years, and the average occupancy is about two to three years at that property.
There was a series of questions about the maintenance garage, it's shown to, on the diagram. What goes in there, and is it used as a parking space?
We don't typically park vehicles in the garage, there's just maintenance, supplies, no hazardous materials, and if there is a driveway, I'm not sure about this site, we allow maintenance to park in front of the garage in the driveway, if there isn't, then.
By maintenance, you mean your employees?
Yes, our employees.
Okay, so, in that, there was also a question about what is in the maintenance building, what type of equipment is there, materials?
Supplies, appliances.
Hand tools, rakes, shovels, things like that?
Sure, yes.
Now, there was a lot of question about parking. Are you familiar with the parking that's available in similar projects, and is it adequate as a manager?
Yes, like I said, we've owned Stafford Park for almost 10 years, and it's 112 units, we've never had an issue with parking at all of our properties, the affordable properties, we don't have an issue. We have resident events, we have people that have parties, holidays, I, we have, you know, maintenance on-call 24/7, and we've never gotten a phone call saying, I can't find a parking spot.
So just to clarify, the Stafford property is 100% affordable units?
Yes, it is.
Could you tell us the address so that we could go visit it on our own?
Sure, it's 321 Cook Road.
321 Cook?
Yes, it's the Target Shopping Center.
C-O-K.
Yes.
Who does the lawn maintenance, is that an outside contractor?
An outside company, yes.
I think, I'm not sure that I didn't miss any of them, but I think we tried to answer, were there any open issues, Mr. Chairman, that were raised about operations that we needed to address, that you can remember, because I think we touched everything I have in my notes.
I agree with you, Counselor. Does anyone on the board have any issues they would like to talk? Is her testimony done?
Well, no, I would like to now ask about the recreation area, the basketball court and so forth, you understood that we made, you made an application to not have it lit, there was some concern about the safety and its efficiency, could you explain your experience with the similar facilities?
Sure, all of our other properties, they're not lit, we don't prefer that they're open 24/7, so by having them not lit, it doesn't really attract people to come, you know, after hours.
But when you say they're open, like what does open mean? Just because they're not lit doesn't mean they're not open. I mean, is there going to be a gate, a locked gate, where somebody's going to physically go?
We have community policies that they assign along with their lease agreement, and it will save the hours, you know, and not everybody follows them, I understand.
Right, I have significant safety concerns with that. Not being lit in an open play area is just asking for trouble.
I think we're open to putting, if the board is recommending that, we're open to put in.
I think the consensus of the board is that we would like to see some type of lighting, understanding, it does not have to be very high intensity, but at least a security level type of lighting at night, so that it's not a completely dark area, because there's security concerns. Okay, Chief, agree with that?
I see it on both sides, I'd be fine either way. Security lighting, I think would be a lot better than anything that's going to be illuminating it as if it's open.
Right, I don't, I don't want to make it to the level where people will interpret it that it's open, but.
Or something that at least the residents can see if somebody is actually on it.
A motion sensor would be even better, because then, then people would be alerted that the lights have been turned on, and it'd be a very easy solution with today's technologies.
Yep.
It's not just the residents that may end up using, it's the people in the area that may wander over and want to use it for after-hour recreational issues. We have some parks that have those issues in town.
It's not a public facility.
But you don't have, it's not a gated community where you are going to be able to definitively keep people out from walking through your property.
Certainly not inviting them on.
Agreed.
It is for the tenants.
Agreed, we're not implying that they will, we're just.
But the realization is that it may, it may occur, all right?
We want to make sure that you are safe and everybody else as well.
And I guess the consensus is, a low-level type of security lighting activated by a motion sensor would be what the board would be amenable to.
We will bring that proposal back for the April 5th meeting. I think another issue, the area that was very interesting to everyone was the tenant review and investigation, if you will, prior to acceptance. Could you just describe what happens and how it works?
Sure, like Ed Spital said previously, it's a three-step process, people come in, they fill out a credit and criminal background check, we run that automatically, if they pass that, it goes through another process where we actually do a one-on-one interview with the applicant, we do third-party verifications, it then gets sent to an outside company's spectrum, they then review the file, ask any questions, we go back for clarifications, once we're satisfied and they're satisfied, it then goes to the state for another approval. It takes anywhere from two to three weeks, depending on how complex the file is. Income-wise, I think there was a question about income, we have minimum requirements, and we also have max, where they can't go over certain rents.
Does everybody in the unit get a background check?
Over 18, over the age of 18.
And you said there was an annual recertification process, right?
Yes, 90 days before their lease is up, we start the recertification process, where they have to bring in everything, their income, W2s, anything for the last year, and we go through the process again.
Does that include, and I think one of the residents brought up a very good point about if someone does get a conviction, a felony or something like that, after they've moved in, do you have the ability to flag that?
Well, we typically get police reports on a monthly basis, so we're very familiar of any kind of activity that's on the property, and then we would be able to follow up with the residents if there was any kind of issue.
But it was pointed out, if someone, if someone gets pulled over for a DWI in Free Hall Township, you won't necessarily get that accident report, and somebody, let's say that individual is convicted, all right, is there any mechanism that you have to flag that?
Well, we wouldn't deny them if they got a DWI.
Right, what are your disqual, because I know that was a concern of one of the residents, what are your, what are your disqualifying choices?
If I may, you don't set those rules, explain who does the rules, and then we'll certainly answer the question.
We have a third-party company, NTN, that we run our credit and criminal background check through, so it's out of our hands.
But they're following rules established by the DCA.
Right, it's a combination, correct.
But the chief's question was, what happens if there's a post conviction?
So if there is a conviction, then we would go through our attorney, but if they get arrested, it, like you said, due process, so we would go through our attorney to go through the eviction process.
Right, so you have a mechanism in place if someone is convicted?
Yes.
That that will be flagged on this recertification?
It's not even at recertification, it would be at any time during their lease.
If I could just follow through with that, so if you, we are one person, a female, male, irrelevant, and they bring someone to live with them, do you then certify that person?
Yes, and I think somebody asked a question before, but how do we know who's living there? We do do the inspection, so we would know if somebody else moved in, you know, illegally, and then we would have them fill out a credit and criminal background check.
Could you describe some of the regular maintenance that's done on the Walters facilities, repainting, lawn landscape, replacement of plant material that may die or?
Sure, we have an outside contractor that handles our snow and our landscaping, we have a contract with them, they go through, they mow the properties, they replace any dead trees, they cut on a weekly basis. We also have an in-house maintenance staff that takes care of the grounds on a daily basis, the condition of the buildings, amenities.
And you have the clubhouse proposed for this site, could you let the board and everybody who's interested know some of the activities that might go on there and how you manage that?
Sure, the office, the management office is typically open from 8:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, we have a manager, a leasing agent, we also have a social service coordinator that is spread throughout a few of our communities, so we'll do resident retention activities, such as pizza parties, crafts, we have the library come in, they do different. such as pizza parties, crafts, we have the library come in, they do different things with the, with the kids or with the families, we'll do holiday parties, the social service coordinator will work one-on-one with any kind of financial needs or medical needs with the residents, then they make appointments, or, you know, she's there certain days of the week, she gets very involved with any kind of medical, financial, things like that.
Mr. Junko, is the clubhouse, is it available to be rented by a resident if they want to have a larger birthday party or something like that?
We typically don't rent the clubhouse, it's open during office hours for the, for the residents to use, and that's where we host the resident, resident parties and things like that.
So you will put a stipulation on the record to that?
Sure, and that's, it's the normal policy of Walters, it's not just at this site, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, now, there was a lot of question about parking, let's just spend a little time on that. What's your experience with parking at a ratio of 143 spaces for 72, we're just slightly under two spaces per unit?
Like I said in the beginning, we haven't had any issues at any of our properties.
And is there, are there any other aspect, well, talk about the office, there was a question about that, what goes on in the office, what size is it, and how much of the clubhouse does that occupy?
I don't know the square footage, I know there's typically a manager's office, a leasing agent's office, and a copy room, that people will lease units out of that space, and then there's a fitness center, a community room where there's computers for the kids or residents to use, I think that's it, Mr. Jung.
Anything else, any other specific management issues that you might want to address based on the discussions that you've had? I would think, I think we tried to cover them all, Mr. Chairman, I have no other direct questions.
Okay, will it have any questions?
I have one question, one of the residents brought up a question, again, regarding to the parking, of, out of the 72 units, I know there's a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms, and I know there's no exact number, but I know there is a cap, what is the maximum number of occupants we could realistically expect?
At our existing family properties, you know, we keep a close tab on how many people and who's living in the units, we have one, two, and three bedrooms, just like at this property, and the average size of the unit is 2.3 people per unit, which this property would equate to 165 people, so that's less than two spaces, including children, I should, including children, and our children ratio at our other family properties is about .7 per unit.
And when you say our other properties, you told me about the Walters?
Family, yes, family affordable property.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, I'll open it up to the public, if you have questions for this witness.
Tina Smilik, 33, Charles Street, how many facilities currently do you run that only have two parking spots per unit?
We abide by the RSIS at all the properties, so...
Okay, but we're working at the minimum standard here, I understand what you work with, but how many have just the standard amount, two per?
I believe all of them.
All of them just have two, you have none of them that are over two, the RSIS standards, none of your properties are over the minimum standard for RSIS?
No.
Okay. And that's minimum, not maximum, because it can go over, so you just, all your properties are minimum RSIS standards, okay. What's the fire capacity for the, how many people are in the community center?
I don't know, I don't have the plan in front of me, it would say it on the plan.
Okay, and I, that's what I asked before, you said she would have the answer. Okay, I'm sorry, it's just, he told me that you would have the answer. So, you said typically you don't rent out, have you ever rented out the space?
No.
Never, so on the record, you will never rent out that space to any person, any organization, any business?
We don't rent out the space because it's an affordable property.
Okay, do you, I'm sorry, go ahead, I won't interrupt.
They have agreed to put a stipulation on the approval that they will never rent out that facility.
Mr. Chairman, it sounds like the applicant was about to say it's part of the rules and regulations of affordable, of it being an affordable housing area.
Oh, we can't rent.
Is that about what you were, so it's...
So, but you allow, how about people, you don't let them have any parties in there?
No.
Even if it's not rented?
Correct.
Okay, and the businesses that come in, you said you bring in the library and different organizations and all that that come in, that's with, in conjunction with your team?
It's with our social service coordinator, she coordinates all that.
I don't think...
When they come in?
Your microphone, I'm not sure that it's on.
Yeah, our battery's down.
Hello?
Maybe just pull the desktop towards you, thank you.
And when they come in, all those programs are just for the residents, they're not allowed to bring friends or anybody else to any of them?
Just for the residents.
Just for the residents, okay. The basketball courts, where is that located exactly?
Looks like it's by the office.
Is there a parking lot nearby, is it?
I think that's an appropriate question for you, Agent Jung.
I just can't see it, I don't, I'm trying to see where it is. There's no, so it's away, so if the ball goes off the court and a kid runs after it, it's not, they're not going to run into a parking spot or anything else, if it goes over into that 50-foot puffer, what's there, if the ball goes over there and they try to get it?
If I could, and I don't want to have to speak for the applicant, but I have it up and I know that you can't see it, the basketball court is enclosed, or at least that area, with a 10-foot fence?
Okay, perfect.
So, in the event that the ball went over the fence, the...
As long as there's a fence there, that's all that matters.
It's a 10-foot fence.
Because, you know, the kids aren't gonna, well, they will go over it, but, but that's just safety, okay. You said that you have people coming in for maintenance, are they also background checked, considering there's going to be children in this facility that's going to be in the parking lot?
Our employees, yes.
All employees are background checked, any, anybody you hire is background checked that comes in?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know, thank you.
Yep.
Kathy Novak, 16 Stratton Drive.
Were you previously sworn, Ms. Novak?
Yes, I was, I was earlier.
Right, C and I, or K and I?
The community center that cannot be rented out, is it locked during the day?
No, it's open during business hours.
So it's open to the residents during business hours?
Yes.
So what would prevent me from going in there and having a birthday party for my five-year-old or whatever?
We don't allow that, it's...
But would you, who would stop me?
We would.
And is someone there to stop me?
Yes, we have management onsite and maintenance onsite.
Okay.
And there's also fobs throughout the building, so when we leave, that door is locked, and there's no access to it.
Okay, so it's kept open all day for everyone's use?
Yes.
Okay. The second, I heard you say that you have another party that does the background checks, but someone was talking earlier, Mr., I forget his name, Spidel, that everyone has to pass muster, and as, and as property manager, I was wondering if you have, what pass muster would mean, if you have any of the criteria that the other company does for the background?
I don't have it with me, but like I explained, it is based off a third-party company that sets up the criteria between HUD and HMFA and our own rules, so it's a combination.
Because I heard, I think I heard someone say that if there was a DWI while they were living there, they could possibly be evicted?
No, that was...
No? Okay, thank you.
Carmine Longo, 16 Bracken Court, so if legal tenants that live there bring in people that are not supposed to be there to live, or if they sublet the apartment illegally, to me, that seems unenforceable, how, how do you want, how do you enforce that? In your 11 properties that you manage, has that actually, have you courted anyone doing that, have people been evicted?
We have, people try it, and like, because we have management onsite, because we have management onsite, and we do inspections twice per year, you know, and you also, because we have an office onsite, you see people coming and going, and other residents will rat out, other residents too.
So people have been evicted in the 11 apartments that you've managed for that reason?
Yes, once or twice it's happened, but we manage it.
Hi, Catherine Leibel, 58 Newbury Road, according to one of the other gentleman's statements, it was stated that you probably wouldn't have management onsite, that it would be shared between Jackson and Howell, so how is that working if they're always onsite?
No, that was a maintenance unit that he was describing.
Why don't you clarify that?
Sure, we have a management office at every property, we share one, but at this specific property, we will have a manager onsite and a leasing agent onsite, along with maintenance, too.
And you also said that the, whoever's staff that's working there will be background checked?
Yes.
Is that including any child endangerment checks, because there will be children on the property, so will these people all have been checked for any child, any sort of child endangerment, included registered Megan Law's offenders?
I don't know what our HR policy is, I would think. I'm not sure what our HR policy is now, I don't know.
Do you know what child endangerment is, like that, the review?
I don't, you know, it's our HR department that does our employee checks, so I can find out.
Well, that would be something of importance, since there will be children there, and, you know, we'll have our children in the area as well, so...
Mr. Junko, you'll come back at the next meeting with an answer?
I will, but, I mean, we're specifying a background check, is, my question is, is there a separate child endangerment background check?
Well, some, some businesses don't worry about that if they're, if they don't consider them being in the facilities with the children, they don't really check that and monitor that, while like, if you work in a school district, obviously they're going to check to see if that person's been convicted of that. If you're in this criteria, are they really one-on-one with those children? No, but they're still within the vicinity of those grounds of those children, while they're doing maintenance or managing.
Wait, wait, we can postulate all we want, why don't we have the applicant come back with an answer?
That's fine.
And then we can go from there.
And can I just address something, April 5 is spring break, so a lot of your residents who live in Howell might not be here, so I think that's kind of giving us a...
Yeah, I can understand that, but we have, we have other applications, all right, and, and that's, that's the date that we have to bring him back.
Thank you.
And just the question that she kind of asked about maintenance and the children, we have a policy, if somebody calls in a work order and a maintenance person goes to the unit, if a child's home alone, we would, they would, they're not permitted to go into the unit, they would never put themselves in that position.
Thank you.
Have you been sworn?
Yes.
Okay, just state your name again, so we have it on the tape.
Patricia Isbrad Kelly, you mentioned office hours, what exactly are the office hours?
8:30 to 5:00 typically, Monday through Friday, yes.
Would that change during summer hours, since, no, so the clubhouse would maintain in those specific hours? Okay, and just one more thing, if someone was arrested for a felony, while they were in your facility, I know there was mention of DWI and everything else, how would you find out that they are now a felon? The police report wouldn't go to you?
We get monthly police reports, we do, yes.
On each person?
If there's any kind of police activity at the property.
Not at your property, I mean, if they're, if they're anywhere and...
We wouldn't be notified in that, I mean, typically, I would think it would be in the newspaper or something, so we would find out that way.
Okay, that's, I was just curious, thank you.
New question, cross, just wanted to see if you had the answer on the office, Stephanie.
The applicant has actually called this space a couple different things in various documents, so I'm going to want to discuss that with Mr. Junko between now and the next meeting.
Okay, but we still have a definition that we can put on the record right now?
I'm going to discuss it with Mr. Junko, and we're going to discuss, address it at the next meeting, it's also interplay with the residential site improvement standards, which I don't have in front of me, so I want to see what that says, because that would be preemptive.
But shouldn't the definition be, I mean, the definition doesn't change no matter what he has, right? It's, it's a definition for everybody?
It's a definition that may be in the residential site improvement standards, and that's what I'm going to look at between now and the next meeting, and, but I also want to see whether it's relevant at all, because he has called it something, or the applicant has called it different things, so I need to understand what it is that they are representing it as.
Okay, they're going to tell you it's whatever it needs to be, so...
I don't read mine, so they're going to tell me...
They're going to tell you whatever you tell them it needs to be, and then they'll call it that.
Whoa, 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 I'm going to tell them...
You're not telling me a definition, I was asking for a definition.
No, you said, "I'm going to tell them what it needs to be."
No, I'm going to say, they're going to tell you what it is.
That's what you said, that's what you said, and "I'm going to tell you," I'm going to ask them what it is, and then I'm going to look at it, I'm not placing any thoughts in their mind.
Okay, I'm sorry then, I am sorry, okay?
All right, any other questions for this witness? All right, seeing none?
Mr. Junko, it's getting to the time, I'm going to turn into a pumpkin, okay? Well, be careful driving home, then, but, Mr. Chairman, I understand we'll be back on April 5, we have a whole list of ideas to, items to respond to, I hope that we can find the answers, I think some of these questions might be a little more difficult, but I don't know how we distinguish, I'm not aware of any distinguishing, for example, in a background check, there's these kinds of...
If you don't have an answer, you don't have an answer.
Well, we'll have an answer, I just don't know that I'm going to be, that I'm going to find a child endangerment check.
Understood, Mr. Junko.
Mr. Chairman, I would encourage the applicant to talk to the Fire Bureau and get their objections and questions answered before the 5th, please.
The question is to put hydrants on the extension of the connection going out to where they're going, that's what that's for, that's a, that's a routine thing that the Fire Bureau asks.
So it's not something that we should be concerned, too concerned about?
Well, I, I think we have a valid... I mean, it could be something you could ask, but it, there's a reason they're asking, they're trying to take advantage of this application being able to provide an additional hydrant in the area, that's all it is.
Okay. And you've agreed that you'll go back and talk to the Fire Department?
We can.
Yes, just be one more thing that we can close the loop on.
Hey, Mr. Chair, application number SP-1039, Howell Family Apartments LLC, be carried to the board's April 5, 2018 meeting, there'll be no further notice to property owners, so if you receive a notice previously, you will not receive another one, all files are in Eileen's office, if you'd like to see them during normal business hours, the meeting on the 5th will be given at 7 o'clock here at the main meeting room in Town Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wait, wait, before you do that, Tom, is there any reason to go into executive session?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Tom?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
I'll second, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
No.
Meeting adjourned.